It's recording. Is it ready? Okay. Hello, everybody. It's September 29th. It is 5:32. We are starting a special meeting. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. All right. Thank you. Hope you're all enjoying the weather. Callan, can we have a roll call?
Trustee Wheeler.
Here.
Trustee Curry.
Here.
Trustee Greg.
Here.
Mayor Holstead.
Here.
Trustee Ron.
Here.
Trustee Peterson.
Here.
And Trustee Youngblood.
And Marcus Assey. Yep. The purpose of this meeting today is to approve the special license or to vote on the special license for the Chamber of Commerce Harvest Fest, which is October 4th, 2025. We had some paperwork issues, so we called a special meeting to vote on it. Do you have anything to say about it, Lee?
No, it's pretty standard. It will be in the park. She, if you saw in your packet the map, it's pretty much from the ballfields to the west end. I'm not certain how she's going to contain the royalty castle next to the, but that's what it is. And I don't believe that she got people from you.
I haven't heard from her at all.
Okay, so we'll follow up with that.
Okay. I need a motion to approve that. Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
No, I can do a discussion.
Yeah. Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that. Any comments?
Yes. I should have come this before, but I didn't. I mean, I guess I have a couple of questions. I should. One is, Randy's okay with all those vehicles being parked all over the side of the field?
I mean, we used to have camper in there. So.
Okay.
Yes?
Okay, well, that was one. And then I just have a little concern about, given the reports that we got coming out of Escalante Days about alcohol control. There's a new agenda. I get that Escalante Days maybe can be a little more unmanageable, but I'm a little concerned coming.
Right, and that's why we, so we should have had it on the September agenda. But it's the applicant's obligation to inform us, not the vice versa. Right? So, and it says, "Write on the form." And so that is, that's equally a concern for us. You know, I mean, it comes down to if we vote no, then there will be no, and there'll be a storm on Facebook.
Yeah, and I would say that if we did have an Escalante issue, which we asked some of those issues to be corrected, and if we continue to see it at Harvest Fest after approving the permit, I would say that we have to seriously look hard at next year.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Now, we can deny the alcohol permit, and there's no reason at all why the festival can't go elsewhere.
That's what I said, and I wrote her back, and that was my thing, was, and she said, "Well, there's no alcohol, we can't make money, so I'm going to cancel." And she goes, "I'll go to my board," and I said, "Well, let me know what they decide." Let them decide. I don't think they got together. I think, I don't know what they decided. No one, no one let me know what they decided.
Well, and you know, there's also reading of the application in the packet, you know, 60-day. And sure, maybe there was, you know, some paperwork issues on our side, but there again, it's not our, it's not our festival, so it's not our responsibility. The chamber should have been here August, September.
Correct. Wasn't it supposed to be a public, public comment period? There is, generally speaking. There's a public comment period right now. When you go to CML, you'll see two places that we have it posted for the chamber banquet, which we'll vote on next time. So, yes.
So, does this come up for public hearing for the special event liquor permit?
Did it come up for public hearing?
We didn't hold that back in July. Right?
Would we approve all the permits?
We, so what we decided was to approve all the park spaces and then see how, what would happen in Escalante Days before we approved the whole calendar. And so here we are.
And we didn't get any feedback from the chamber.
Right.
We did from Sheriff Nolan. Which I appreciate that.
So, what point was it, what were, at what point was it that everything just kind of dropped off? We're just left in these spaces, what's next? Because if you don't, you don't know what's next, and you haven't, you don't know what was supposed to happen. Right, so, you know, as I stated, it probably should have come up, as Linnea said, either on August or the September. So, the clerk at the time didn't put it on the calendar, didn't make any phone calls, didn't make me aware, it just got dropped. And that was her responsibility, Susan.
Whose responsibility?
Yeah.
Yeah, but then it's also the responsibility of
It says right on there that it's the responsibility of the applicant, not the town.
Yeah, to make sure that.
Right.
Yeah. And there's no, there's been no communication with the sheriff's department and no, as, you know, my understanding, there's supposed to be, here's, here's where my garden, beer garden fence is going to be.
Yeah, she has the whole thing fenced off.
Oh, so the entire thing is a beer garden? Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure how that's going to work. Did you get to see it, Sheriff Nolan? Steve, you can't hear.
Just checking to make sure you didn't send me anything.
Oh, yeah. Did you get to see the mouth? I think I sent it. Where am I going?
Back in March or something.
No, there you go.
Well, and you know, Riverfest, they do that, then.
Yeah.
But they don't go from, they go from the ballfields east, not west. There's no fence.
Yeah, I know, that's a lot of fencing to bring up.
That's my concern. Yeah, so.
I don't know, I think if it was that important, she would have followed up, and she should be here. Well, I think the applicant should be present.
I do too.
Yeah, to especially ask, answer any questions.
Right.
You know.
So. Now, to pass it, because I lost the call.
I'll vote on it. How many years, how many years has this festival been happening?
I would say
Harvest Fest, the most recent festival.
Right. Eight years? No.
I mean, I I throw it out there to amend the vote, or to amend the motion to make a motion to amend the motion to not include the liquor application.
This is just a liquor application.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
This is only liquor.
Okay.
It's either yes or no.
Okay, right.
Yeah, because we already approved the event. Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
In going to deny the permit, my recommendation is, is to make some specific findings as to why. So what I'm hearing is, sketch plan was not submitted, right?
It was like, two days ago.
Okay.
So not insufficient amount of time for anybody to have any questions. There was no meeting with the sheriff. There was no meeting with the sheriff, and the plan was submitted Thursday? Yeah.
So the plan was submitted late. The requirement to meet with the sheriff was not met.
Right.
What are the other grounds that you all are considering?
The fencing, I mean, well, that's a lot of fencing, like Lee was saying, that's a lot of fencing.
So, something about the play park, the kids', little kids' park, that wasn't fenced off? Was it fenced in?
Well, they have it fenced in now.
But my point is, if you're thinking of denying it, I would make some specific findings in the motion as to why, in time with the application, failure to conduct, solve with the town marshal, whatever other reasons.
You could also say it, even if it's failing. Failure to enclose, it's not supposed to be completely enclosed? It shows it. I don't know if it's possible. Probably don't know what that's going to happen, it's on the line.
Well, they enclosed river.
Riverfest goes east. It's already enclosed, right? You're enclosed in the baseball field. Yes. This goes all the way west to the west parking lot, so you've got to fence in that whole thing. And essentially, let's see. Guess the beer, yeah, the beer is across from the kids' stuff, so.
Is it possible, maybe contingent on them accepting that we have it fenced in? But she, but she's showing that it is fenced in, so we can't make the assumption.
We don't know what that fence looks like.
Sure.
She's showing that.
Because in Escalante Days, she had like the used car lot flags strung up.
Yeah.
That's
I mean, is this all we got?
While, so we don't have while I am and I would be first to say, to, to vote to deny the liquor permit, given these things, I also want be a little clear that we're not liable in some way because this got dropped, because the trans, tampering position.
It would be two months in advance. So, I don't know, it, you know, it clearly says on an applicant, not town. That's going to be, you know.
It, Chris says that will be, that will be the thing, and I just
Right, yeah. That was going to be my question, consequences. What kind of consequences would you be prepared to handle? That's a good question.
Sheriff, do you have any input on this? As far as the
But it looks like it's in a different location from where it used to be.
Yeah.
Which maybe it looks like it's smaller.
Yeah.
But I she generally sends, sends me a special event request for security, and I have not heard from her. So I don't, I'm just kind of waiting to see what, what happens, and I, all I can do is try.
Well, the
Five days out.
Like on her application, the, the sheriff's box is marked, but then there's another box for just your own security, which is not marked, but I did notice the sheriff's box was marked. But there, still, she's not been in touch with you. No, and you have to staff and
Well, I got, I got to plan.
Yeah, right, you know.
She's usually pretty, pretty good about these things.
Well, I think part of the issue probably is she has another job now, so you know, that one might, it might have slipped her mind too, just like it did ours, so, yeah.
I'll always try to, I think, work.
Yeah.
If it's up to you, I mean, then not even contacting the sheriff.
Yeah, you do, I mean, there are definitely ways that we, that we will get blamed, for sure.
But, I mean, yeah, either way, that's, could happen. It would just be nice to know what kind of fencing.
In the past, we've used the plastic fencing down there, the big plastic fencing that's gone around.
Do you know what she has planned? That you're
I don't, I don't. I thought it was all taken care of, but I mean, in the, in the past down there, we've used the big plastic.
The orange fencing.
Yeah, not the, not the markers like we do it.
The only thing I will caution about that is it's not the same map as it usually is.
Right.
So that's all, you know, you have a lot of linear feet.
Yeah, it's huge. But we're making some assumptions too, I guess. Like, she has
The applicant should be here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so.
Well, we have to vote anyway.
So I don't think there's a requirement that the applicant be present, looking at the code, but that may be something if you want to admit that in the future. I mean, I think the, the grounds would be a late and incomplete application, if that's what the, or desires to do is to mind that. I think it would fall into that category, but then at the same time, you would have the discretion to grant the application with conditions. For example, you could specify the type of fencing that needs to be installed.
You know, I don't like to punish people, but maybe just allow her to do it, go ahead and allow her to do it, but could we present her with a fine?
Not unless you do notice and hearing.
Not unless what?
Not unless you give her due process with notice and hearing. You can't impose a fine today.
I would say just a warning that we need to, and maybe I think we do need to look at our, our code that says, you know, we do need these types of applications.
Yeah, I mean, the, the code is, is there. I think it's a matter of just enforcing what is written. In my, my opinion, and just requiring a more detailed site plan. A fence can mean anything from a string to, you know, jingling, portable panels or whatever, but maybe just require some additional site plans.
So can we approve a contingent upon getting a more specific plan about the fencing and the containment of alcohol, which was a problem in Escalante Days? And she has to meet and consult with the sheriff to get his board and their staff on board with this thing. Can we, are we up against?
Well, it's five days away.
Right.
Out of that's, you know.
Is that enough time, Sheriff Nolan?
I said I'd try and make something.
I'm concerned about our liability if we don't have
I'll try to make something.
Deputy's, if we don't have adequate fencing, we get the drunks running around and
But that's not our
Yeah, that's hers.
Okay.
I mean, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's probably the chamber's liability there, but I am concerned.
Have insurance.
Yeah.
That includes the town.
You're concerned with, yeah, provided proof of insurance?
So there's insurance that the chamber has that also looks like not well.
And to your point, you know, Caitlin, the Harvest Fest is a much more chill festival than Escalante, which is a bunch of like crazy softball players, and it is two days, and it gets a lot more energy. I haven't seen anybody out of control at Harvest Fest. They look around at cars and kind of, it's a pretty chill event, if that makes any difference.
Pretty chill.
So it's just a very different vibe, I, but the point's a valid. So in any case, we need to think about your yes vote says approve the liquor license, and no vote says no liquor license.
Or yes with conditions.
Yeah, that's what I would like to do, yes with conditions.
That's sold with the sheriff and
Have a fence planned.
Adequate fence.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right.
So can we amend?
Should be able to amend.
Go for it.
I make a motion to amend the motion on the floor to include approving the chamber's liquor license for the festival at Joe Rel Park.
Contingent upon.
Contingent upon.
You got this.
Meeting with the sheriff, getting a plan worked out with the sheriff for security to be part of this plan, and submitting a plan for what the fencing will look like, and a plan for how alcohol will be controlled a little better than it was at Escalante Days. Second?
Also.
Okay.
I did, but did you want to have that by a certain date so that you can
Yeah, we need a date.
By
After tomorrow.
Thursday?
I would say no later than Wednesday.
That's what I was thinking.
Oh, yeah.
It gives tomorrow to
Okay, by Wednesday.
Yeah.
And if those conditions are not met, no, that, that would be, that could not approve.
Who's going to make that decision? Who is going to make that decision? Well, like I said, you're submitting a better fencing plan, and you're submitting an alcohol containment plan. Those are both subjective pieces of information, so we need to identify who's going to review the documents and agree that those conditions have been met, so that we can move forward or not.
Would it be absurd to ask the sheriff to approve it or not?
They would like to submit, or to amend the motion contingent upon Susan meeting with you, making a plan for security, submitting an adequate fencing plan, and an alcohol containment plan that's more specific than what she's already done. They would like to have that done by Wednesday, and we need somebody who's going to be responsible for evaluating those documents, and if, and agreeing that that
The conditions are met or not.
Were not met on Wednesday.
Are you doing, by what times?
End of day?
End of visiting?
End of day.
End of business, five a.m.?
Like when the sun goes down or at five?
Five a.m.
And I gotta tell you, I'm a little bit heartburn about that, because the clerk is the liquor licensing authority. You could put that on the clerk, but we don't have a clerk right now.
So could that be
I mean, you could put it on me, you could put it on Kelly. Those are your two choices.
Could, could the sheriff work with Lee?
Yeah, for sure.
On, on that?
Sure.
And you'll give us a thumbs up or thumbs down?
Okay.
Whether the conditions are met or not.
Are you good with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, for sure. Are you good with that, John?
So, conditions are, meet with the sheriff, come up with a security plan, I'm fine with that. Fencing adequate to contain alcohol in the event. Okay? I think that's an enforcement issue. I'm fine with the sheriff and the manager.
Okay.
Preparing down, so.
Okay.
I mean, any of these things, I mean, let's just suppose it's not the chamber, it's just you know, some other organization out there, you know, the Four Corners Backpipe Club wants to have an event for alcohol. Which they, they submit this application, the manager goes up there the day of the event, there's no fence, there's no security, there's no outhouses. I think the manager's got the authority to say no event.
Yeah, or no.
Yeah.
No, no, yeah.
The event is separate, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, and so do we need to add that into the amendment that Lee would have that?
Yeah, to, to the satisfaction of, of the manager.
Of the day of the event?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I think that's fair, because there's been a
Because we are dealing with
A lot of this thing.
Right.
A lot of preparation on people, planning on bringing vehicles.
That's right.
It's a woefully inadequate situation. It's our days before the event.
Yeah.
So we have every right to signal.
So then, are you okay with that, Lee? Like, the, the day of the event, doing a spot check and making sure things were kosher?
I'm needing escort.
Yeah, there you are.
Oh, do it right along.
You sure you don't want to do it in the baby pool?
Yeah, well, we end up doing it the day before anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's really
I don't think you can do that and be fair to the chamber, because we have already have the liquor ordered and the beer truck there, and then you shut it down. I think it should be approved on Wednesday.
Okay.
That's fine.
Yeah, Wednesday, end of day.
But it's still it's, the festival would still be, would still have a spot check on Saturday to make sure that what, what was planned and agreed upon with the sheriff is actually going through on Saturday. So it's not like, say one thing, but do another. That's not going to fly. So Saturday, whatever is agreed upon on Wednesday, Saturday, then what was agreed upon needs to be put in place.
Yeah.
That makes sense?
Oh, yeah.
I think that's true for any of them.
Yeah, no, I, I think so too, but it apparently needs to be spelled out.
All right, so, re-motion.
Re-motion?
Re-motion. Make a new motion, because we added some stuff.
Or one cent.
Hey, Caitlin.
Do we think we got it? Did he have the deadline in it?
Amended it, and then I guess I'll amend to the amendment to include that there would be okay, we, we already amended that it would be finalized on Wednesday, but then the additional amendment would be that on Saturday the town manager, Lee, would check on the site to make sure that fencing is in place and, and everything that was agreed upon Wednesday with the sheriff is being implemented at the festival.
I'm going to say that's true for any
Yes.
Right, yeah.
We're just spelling this one out. Let's take a roll, right? Okay, we ready to vote? Take a roll. Take a roll call vote please.
Trustee Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Hookson?
Yes.
Trustee Roan?
Yes.
Trustee Greg?
Yes.
Trustee Curry?
Yes.
Trustee Wheeler?
Yes.
All right, motion passed. Let's enjoy the Harvest Festival. Anybody need a quick break before we move on to?
Yeah.
I have a quick question real quick. Do those amendments need to be seconded before we voted?
We seconded his.
We did.
I seconded, seconded something.
Although I don't know that we got yours.
I don't think mine was seconded.
Oh, I thought you were adding context and details.
Well, but then it has to be seconded.
All right.
If, yeah, if Linares didn't get seconded, then it means to.
Okay, we got a first and a second.
Well, I think we need to start all very quick.
Are you going to make motion again?
Well, I think the, Kelly just needs to read the, the original motion plus amendment plus my amendment.
We got lost in amendments. Let's start an amendment from scratch.
So we need to, Caitlin needs to say, I move to, and then Kelly could just read.
I would be happy to.
And then we can say.
Okay.
You know, approve with conditions and then read with the condition.
Yeah.
I move to approve the special event liquor license for the Chamber of Commerce Harvest Fest on October fourth, two thousand twenty-five with amendments including meeting with the sheriff and planning for security, submitting a more detailed fencing plan and submitting an alcohol containment plan. The sheriff and the town manager will be relied upon to determine if these conditions have been met. The deadline for these conditions is Wednesday.
End of day, five o'clock.
Which would be the first at five P M. And there will also be a spot check on the day of the event performed by the manager to ensure that all conditions are being met.
Perfect.
Now motion.
So the only caveat to that is I think you said October fifth, the event's Saturday, right?
No, she said October first.
Fourth.
Fourth, I mean.
So someone you want to second that?
I'll second that.
Okay.
All right, let's do another roll call.
All right. Trustee Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Hookstead?
Yep.
Trustee Roan?
Yes.
Trustee Greg?
Yes.
Trustee Curry?
Yes.
Trustee Wheeler?
Yes.
All right, motion passed. They have a liquor license contingent, all in, everything.
Okay.
Which I'm not going to read again.
Thank you.
All right, anybody need a quick break? We're moving right into workshop.
We need an adjournment time.
Oh, meeting adjourned. It is, sorry, it is five fifty-eight, this meeting is adjourned, we are heading into workshop.
To an issue that you already know about, it's not a contentious like that I assume that you don't know. I just want to make sure we're all on the same page. So some of it may be too elementary. But because this is a new way of doing it, I'm just going to try to start with some other.
Can I ask a question just to make sure? I'm assuming that since this is on that it is.
You are being recorded right now.
Actively be recorded and people can hear us.
That's correct.
Okay, good.
And that should be transcribed, you know.
Yep.
We did, just so for your information, we left Zoom because of the issues we had and we have moved to Teams. We had an issue on Friday with court.
Yep.
It's technology. We're not I T people. We're doing the best we can over here, so hopefully.
Yeah, I found Teams is much more reliable than Zoom.
Nice. All right. Yes, please do so.
What's that?
All right, I'm good.
Oh, yeah.
Always some more room. So the goal this year is to be more strategic and more collaborative while we're working on the budget. As you know, last year I started on October fifteenth, which was the day that our preliminary budget was supposed to be submitted, so we worked in catch-up and whatnot all year. And so a lot of stuff was kind of all through the cracks just because we weren't, I was new, we didn't really know what all of the systems and policies were. And again, what you'll see as we go through is some of it is learning curve as far as what we do actually spend our money on, where things are, you know, the different expenditure accounts. You know, I know better now that years after what we spent our money on than I did. First day, I started last year, so hopefully we will get more accurate. The goal is going to be to determine our resources, so we'll look at revenues and where we're getting our money and evaluate some of the changes that have happened over the year and that will be coming up. We will be estimating the costs of some of our general expenditures. We want to prioritize our goals for the community and what we're trying to accomplish. On the table in these packets was the strategic plan you guys worked on, I believe, last year. That set forth some of your goals to start with, so we can pull those in and make sure that we're aligning our expenditures with our goals and that we're aligning ourselves with what we're trying to accomplish. And then we'll sort of summarize that data and then ultimately as we're provide, we're coming up with our big plan for the budget, then our final goal will be adequately communicating that to the, to the public and offering opportunities for people to have questions, to come in and review the budget and really have a good understanding of how we're spending our tax dollars. Okay? So the first page you'll see past the table of content is the local government budget calendar and you'll see that October fifteenth is the deadline for presenting the proposed budget. So the goal today, we'll look, as we're looking things over, I'll take the information that we have, we reviewed today and put that into a budget and that will be in the October thirteenth meeting that will be presented to you. And a copy of that will be available at the front that, for anybody who wants to come in from the public and look over that budget. Just a reminder, this isn't going to be our final, this will be our very first start. So if we need to make tweaks or changes, if information comes in, we can still make changes based on feedback or, you know, things that may come up, but this is going to be our foundational piece. And then we'll have, continue to have meetings after we talk about the validity and then to approve the final budget. I noticed that the budget will be in the paper and that should be in there this weekend, next week. Okay, so then we're going to get to what our, our vision is. The first page that's in your notebook were some ideas, things that I have gathered just from being in meetings. Of things, what our vision is, what do we want? Or what is our community and what have you heard from the community members on how we want to spend our funds, what's important to us, what are our priorities? So the first page was just some ideas that I had and then if you flip to the next page, there's an opportunity for you to write down, what do you guys think? What have you heard? What do you think our number one priority should be?
Have we gotten the, I know it's maybe jumping ahead, have we gotten the requests from people in town that we, like the library asked for money or?
Not done that process yet.
We haven't done it yet, okay.
That will, we will be talking about that when we get to our expenditures.
Can we overlay what we did at the D B four's retreat? Well, some of that would have been gathered, right?
Right, and that's all I want you to do is pull up the next page and like, what do you think? What are your thoughts? What do you think is the most important thing?
Are you saying you need another copy of that?
Yeah, I don't know.
Oh, it's right there, right next to your. Sorry. Yeah.
Thank you.
That's probably your time. Yeah, or we can share that if anyone wants. I just made one copy for each two people. You can be my two percent. So what do you, you know, you just throw some ideas out. Sheila, what do you, are one of your, one of the most important things that we address for the community? Well, I know the two that are recommended, the two priorities recommended are infrastructure and law enforcement. Okay. I have some two thousand twenty-two, a survey that I can bring and show you too. And when you're saying infrastructure, are you thinking about the water infrastructure? Or are you thinking about multiple things? Sewer, drainage, all that.
Safety, safety infrastructure.
Okay. Yeah, I want to try to, let's try to like dive it or drill it down a little bit to like, how are we going to apply our funds? So if we say infrastructure broad, it's kind of hard for us to pick and choose, but we say safety infrastructure.
Fourth and Riverside intersection, I think we've talked about, I think the main and the fourth and main or fourth and fourth and, well, the highway too, fourth and, I think the crosswalks. I think we really need to just sort of meet with that group.
The pedestrian.
Pedestrian group and.
And we have done some meetings with that group. Great, just as an update to that, Vision Zero people came in, it was myself, Lisa Reed, the superintendent, the library and a Vision Zero and the P T A. And so our best hope is that they can add bus line so that people can get on a bus and get to the library or get across the street and walk home on the other side. Right, so that's what the active pursuit is because to try and put a crosswalk person is, you know, I mean, ultimately the person, if they hit anybody, it would be their liability, however, you know, you're putting a lot of pressure on somebody, whether that's me or a retired person or a P T A person or a teacher.
And I think we need to separate it out because I think infrastructure and safety are two very different things.
Oh, for sure.
Infrastructure is how, is a building going to fall down? Is the sewer going to work? Is the water going to continue to be clean? And then safety is something different.
Okay, so then like keep, like we're digging off that, so we're thinking about, you know, building, so we can think about the water.
Yeah.
Treatment building. Oh, you're perfect.
You have my time, honestly?
How long it was going to take you? The water, you can think about the water building, the water treatment, the water treatment plant building, we know it's got some significant issues. So we can put that on our list for infrastructure, the water pipes, the delivery system we want on our list. Can you guys think of other things that you want on the list?
Yeah, I think there's, on the infrastructure list or just?
On any of it, just whatever.
And I don't know how to, one, this would fall under, but I think we have an obligation to basic town quality, so like keep the parks up. Keep the, you know, keep the, you know, all the parks clean and sprinklers working and, you know, continue to make sure grass is green. You know, I think that's just what people come into the town to, a lot of times. So I don't know if that falls under infrastructure, it might, but it's a subset of infrastructure.
Right, and I think that it's important because it sets that, you know, keeping things clean and well maintained. You know, one of the issues I, you know, I gather has, has been an issue when we're looking at budgeting and looking at big projects is that a lot of big projects and maintenance projects have been pushed off and pushed off. And now we're scrambling to pay for things that had we done some like maintenance on all along. Right, that we wouldn't be in quite so much of mind. So I think both maintenance of, you know, the aesthetic as far as cleanliness, et cetera, but also maintenance, like serving maintenance, vehicle maintenance, street maintenance. I think maintaining those things and keeping them in good working order is a good priority.
I think also we're, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm talking about safety, you know, I always worry about hydrants. I've looked this up, I don't know how many times, to make sure that our fire hydrants function properly. All of them, not one or two, but everyone is placed on every street. Because I haven't seen a report from Randy or anybody in quite some time that those fire hydrants have been checked.
Okay.
We check them twice a year, every one of them.
Really?
Well, you know, so you know when you saw that funny truck and you called me and you were like, it's that truck. That was us checking a fire hydrant while we're filling it for Mag Flora.
That's only one.
Sure, but we do it all over town. We get it from a different fire hydrant every time we.
Okay, did we have a report on that? Because I've never seen a report on hydrant maintenance.
It's not like you make a report. I mean, we could break down the day we did it, but you're just creating, you're creating a lot of work that they can't then mow the grass or clean the bathroom. We can do it, we can certainly do it. We don't have a problem with it.
Well, I'd appreciate it. I think that's a safety issue and it's also a liability issue.
Sure, and you know that all the fire hydrants, I think we're adding four and all the fire hydrants from one to six will be replaced in the water main project.
Good, that's because you're going to be doing water infrastructure. Good. That's because you're going to be doing water infrastructure.
Right, so it makes sense.
The other thing I was going to say is, and I don't know, I know Val brought this up, Chris has brought this up, is we need to take responsibility for better or continued river access. Because that is our most valuable, well, like making sure the trails down to the river are clean and cleared and whatever. Because I do think that is our biggest asset here, is people coming into the river and just making sure that we're.
And you're talking about JRP or you're talking about?
JRP, yeah. I mean, Riverside is pretty good, but all around there, we have trails that go down that.
Yeah, I don't think, we can't actually do that.
Because it's seal on.
Seal on.
Yeah, great.
Okay.
We could make an agreement with them, but then, you know.
But it's not really on my agenda.
Right, yeah, that was a problem. Alan, any thoughts from you on priorities?
Um, I'd like, uh, the priorities as they're listed here, in terms of our vision, uh, with the addition of, um, pursuing the conversation about securing our own law enforcement.
Okay.
And, and pulling that further and looking at, you know, the private management stations and, um, and the other thing I think about, and this is a small issue, a little couple issues. With the bike park going in and on and it'd be a couple of things wrong. Getting a bear proof trash can down there, getting uh, some money in the budget for a shade structure, a chase of two that the bike and skate park, which would be really important. And then.
And skate park maintenance?
Yeah.
As you're saying, or a bike, a trash can down there.
Trash can, shade shelter, and then what we need to do in terms of of, of maintenance and that's been considered. And then I, I'm not sure, we, we've talked about this before and I know there's money in the budget and I don't know if it helps to have other money in the budget, but the, uh, park and the gazebo, and particularly now the skate and the bike park. Jill R. Park gets super busy on the weekend. And yes, today, the day before yesterday, let's see, what is today, Monday? Saturday, there was a big, there was an event at the gazebo. And we've been having a lot of issue with bears. We have one basically living with us. So we're real aware of the bear situation. So Jen and I walked out toward the end of the event, uh, to just to check in with people and say, hey, please make sure you clean up because there's a lot of bears down and they're very hungry. And they were really neat folks. But they have these, they had all their stuff bagged up and, and like five or six huge trash bags of stuff and they had to know where to take them or what to do with them. So Jen and I said, well, just leave, put them up by the bathroom. And then when you all are finished, we're going to come get them. And, and then we, we got the key to open the community center. Uh, I'm sorry, dumpster there. So, and I, and I'm wondering about whether or not there can be an accessible dumpster for that, for people that are using the gazebo and or you know, and or a, a, a staff.
Make a different kind of container that they can put bigger bags in.
Yeah, they can, you can't, and they're being good about it because it's so much, you can't just hand stuff.
No, 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 it creates a hole.
But we need something like that and then, and then that communicated to people when they were in the gazebo. Here's this.
Uh-huh, great.
Um, here, here's this dumpster, it's a secure dumpster. And you're responsible for taking your trash to that dumpster and then something that won't fit in the. And these are small issues, but I really like, other than what I added about the law enforcement, I like the, I think clean water pedestrians, safety, this stuff is our priority. I think it's a good idea.
Brings up like, but you know, defining some of our resources. I feel like with RJ coming into his possible removal by spring, correct? Still like we should, probably should we have a, somehow have a meeting with all the maintenance crew where we kind of hash out and start to develop a plan for, you know, what, what we would like to really focus on when it comes to all this maintenance, you know? Start to kind of strategize with them.
I think we direct town manager and she directs your town employees, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you for the correction there. But I just like finding out what we, what kind of resources we have within that crew to be able to rely on, lean on, maybe these things. Because I think there is a lot and they do a lot, but we've got to figure out how to maximize it, I imagine. Yeah, best way possible.
Well, so the answer to that would be to put in a half a head on top of the fourth person that already comes in and mows the grass and washes all the bathrooms every day.
Yeah.
During the summer. That would be how, because right now we have three people, we're pretty much to max, Jen.
Yeah.
Well, we had three people today. We have four in the morning and we have five in the summer.
Yeah.
I do think half ahead, you mean at half a staff position?
Right. If you're a college kid, work from rings or?
That's a budget piece, right? We have a budget, we have another position if we need it. I feel like we, it feels like we need it. It feels like there's a lot of things that are going by the wayside because we just don't have the manpower to keep up with it.
Yeah, that sounds.
The street sweeping, the trash removal, the this and that, the maintenance of all the sprinklers.
Yeah, there's slums and I think that's.
Extra help.
Yeah, I think two more that came to mind, Chris kind of spurred my thoughts on one of them, but we got to invest in the community center. That's a good one, that it's a big asset for us as well. Going pretty well, but we need to, even more that we need to probably give recommendations from the board as to what their next steps are, what maintenance needs to be done, flooring, whatever it is. But I think the other one that isn't specifically on our, we don't control, the town manager controls, but, you know, we need to invest in our, uh, employees, you know, make sure that they're paid adequately and getting the raises if they're deserving and all that good stuff. So obviously, I don't know if that needs to be part of our discussion here, but, you know, keeping a steady, happy workforce is important.
Yeah, and if you remember a couple of weeks ago, we talked about the, the health insurance has gone a half a dollar.
Yeah.
So that'll be a forty-five deductible and no reimbursement of a thirty-five hundred.
Yeah.
Um.
It's always our biggest cost in any town, I guess, but it's an important one.
It is. Yeah, it actually makes, separates us from everybody else because we have the best insurance plan. This will make it a little less than that, but it fits our need in that it's a way for us to maintain a reasonable.
Yeah.
Budget.
Cost of insurance is going up, so it's a good, it's a good draw for people.
Perfect. Okay, so does anybody else have any other, um, priority items we want to talk about or put on our list for right now?
And just, um, maybe being able to mag chloride all the streets.
Okay.
On this one or two.
And we're definitely going to get to that in a little bit. I know that thought.
And people have talked about, um, it'd be nice to have sidewalks in town.
Okay. All right. Did you have anything you wanted to add? All right, so moving forward, we have some nice follow-ups. So thinking about revenues, revenues is that are the money that the town collects to operate and provide our services. So we primarily, we get taxes with our property taxes, sales taxes and the marijuana tax. And we have fees and charges for water and sewer permits, licenses and fines. And then of course we'll have intergovernmental funds, which are generally our grants um, that we ask for severance tax, distribution, mineral leases. Um, and then we have some interest and sometimes we have donation. The reason that the slide is in there is so that we can start to think about how, where revenues would positively be increasing for us. Because as we all know, you know, that the cost of many things is increasing and increasing as Chris. So our expenditures are going up. When we think about trying to keep our budget balanced, our expenditures are going up, our revenues have to go up. If our revenues are not going up, then our expenditures cannot go up, which means we'll have to find things.
Is that inclusive of a potential, uh, phase three water tax increase?
Um, so we're not even looking at these three.
No, you're like.
Not even looking at, but what we do want to look at is phase two. And one of the things that we'll look at is the difference between funds. So in governmental accounting, which is different than your personal accounting, we have certain funds that have to sustain themselves and water is one of them. So what we make in water fees and when we were using water tax, that money must sustain the water system. So we have money come in from water fees and then that is the money that we pay out for water projects. We have money that comes in for a grant that was designated for a water program. That money doesn't touch any other fund. That money is only for the water fund and it only happens there. And then all the expenditures come from that same pool. The water must stand on its own two feet. So when we move forward, we'll see that we have some issues that are coming up with some building maintenance that we are going to be required to do, that is on the water treatment plant. That must be paid for with the water revenue. We can't cross and pull, um, different monies, so. Um, our.
I think it's a government.
That is, that's how it's going to work. We then consider, uh, this type of fund, the water fund, the sewer fund, those enterprise style funds need to sustain themselves. Governmental or administrative funds are, have a little bit more flexibility within the fund, but we can't, we don't cross.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we have our community centers that have a special fund, which it should be sustaining itself, but we may have to actually loan it money from our, our general fund.
Yeah, I was going to ask, so if, will it have its own line item?
It does.
Okay.
We're, we're saving comments for the thirteenth.
Oh, no, I just had a question.
Oh.
Um, are, uh, are bonds, bond issuance, is that part of the funds?
Um, they, if we were doing new bonds, they would be part of our, they would be very specific to how they were spent.
In the water.
Typically, however, we would have been on. So one of the things just too, we want to think about is, when we're thinking about our revenues, is economy, right? If people are tightening their belt because the economy is flowing and that's less sales tax. The second piece that we need to think about when we're looking at our income is the, the ruling for marijuana tax. So in July, they reduced our portion and that is in your packet. And you should have seen it both in this packet and the packet that I sent to you. But there is a portion here about the marijuana sales tax revenue disbursement. That amount of money that we were getting was at ten percent, it's now at three and a half percent. So because the state of Colorado is having some funding issues, they have dropped back on what they're sharing with the municipalities. So we will having, we will be seeing, continue to see that start of July, um, a reduction in the amount of income that we have there.
Are we seeing that impact yet?
It will probably be on this next round, this next month.
Yeah.
Because that's a significant.
That's a significant change. Um, the other significant change for us is going to be severance tax and mineral tax. And, um, those are the mineral leases. The severance tax and mineral leases have, um, reduced significantly from what we have been receiving in the past. So looking back in twenty twenty-three, our mineral lease brought in eighty-two thousand dollars. And, um, I believe this year it brought in thirty thousand and our severance tax in twenty twenty-four was thirty-three thousand eight hundred and it was eight hundred dollars.
And why the reduction?
Um, so those are based off, there's a variety of things that they base that off of as far as like county, in the county and the municipalities. It's based on how many people are working in that field, how many mile, road miles we have. There's a, there's a paper that will explain that in your packet. But what we can see is that it's trending downward.
Yep.
And so when we're thinking about how our revenues are going to be keeping pace with our expenditures, we can see that we have some significant decreases in our, um, tax funds that are coming in. Um, so if you switch, if you flip forward, there's going to be one page that has small little detail written along the side. And then if you turn the page, Chris, there is some big print for, and anybody who might get a larger print. No. Um, the smaller one just includes a little bit more budget information. You have from, uh, budget, the twenty-five budget, the amended budget, the actual ends of August. So those are what we actually have run in. The twenty-five year end projection, so that's a mathematical formula based off our actuals. And then you'll see the proposed twenty-six. You're just a little past, Sheila. Nope, this one, yes. Right, it's going to be. Yeah, how are you starting? No, no, keep going. You're almost there.
You've come.
There you go. Yeah, you were there.
I know I'm fast. Um.
But with the, the government budget, are you allowed if there's anything left in twenty twenty-five, float it over into twenty twenty-six?
So if we have money, are you asking?
Hmm, in like, you know, different departments, you know?
So mostly what's happening so far in, is that the money that's in a fund is floating through the fund. So let's say, uh, we look at streets, maybe we spent a little bit less this year on, um, Mag Cloride, but we need to spend more on signage because our signs were bad. Those are still within the fund, so we've gone, we were under a little here and over a little here. So we're balancing that within the fund. We're not sharing that with another year or with another fund. So it's happening within our fund. And our goal is always to make sure that we are as close to what we predict as we can be. So when we look, if you start to look through these numbers, um, we're pretty big tight as far as what's coming in and what's going out are matching pretty closely. But there's not a lot of excess, you know, we're not making tons and tons over. We're pretty much, uh, matching right along.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, when you look at the, the proposed budget that's here, one of the, the, these numbers are predictions, guess estimates, things that, this is my best estimate. And I would say that when I think about doing revenues, especially for the town, it's smarter to be conservative and err on the side of assuming we are not going to, a less than more. You know, go ahead.
Good job, sir. Thank you.
So, you know, my thought would be when we look at, for example, property tax, our year-end projection is a hundred and eight thousand eight twelve. I would be leery to project that we're going to make more than one-ten. If we do, that's fantastic. But with all the different things that we have going on, I think it's smart to stay close to what we're actually getting this year instead of assuming that we're going to have a big jump that's matching the rest of the inflation that's happening.
Yep.
So when you look at these numbers coming down this entire revenue line, all of these numbers are assumptions and all of these numbers can be changed if you think that there's a good reason for it. So I made the assumption basing it on, you know, being conservative and thinking about things that we do know. So figure out tax sitting straight at where it is, it's generally going down because a lot less people are smoking.
Yep.
So it's probably not going to get a lot higher. Road and bridge right around this, the same specific ownership tax, the HUTF.
Isn't that cars, specific ownership, so vehicles?
Yeah, I was asking the same thing.
You know what? Let me get a list of what, everything that's included in that for you. Because I couldn't give you the, the list off the top of my head.
Okay.
Um, when we look at the HUTF, which is the Highway User Tax Fund Tax, that we got an update just right after this was printed. And that number for the year, uh, twenty-six will be thirty-eight thousand five fifty-four.
For twenty twenty-six?
Yes. And when they sent that out right after we made the book.
So it'd be how much?
Thirty-eight thousand five fifty-four.
And so who comes up with that number?
That comes from this date.
Okay.
So we received that from, um, the, and you can actually see what everybody thinks on that. So that's published all the way, um, for every single municipality is online. Oh dang it. And then you'll see the severance tax and the mineral lease. I kept them right around what we do off this year. We can drop that if you feel leery about gestimating it that high or we can leave it, leave it soft for right now and see how things progress. Mineral lease and severance tax are paid out once per year, that's in September. So it's kind of a guessing game is it came in, we see what it is and then we wait till next September and keep our fingers crossed. There's not a projection like there is with HUTF.
Yeah.
Okay?
And that's like cleaning and oil on.
So definitely keep it low.
Mm-hmm. Um. Um franchise revenues, we have different franchise agreements with at Empire. We've talked about those throughout the year. We also, we made eighty five thousand six hundred this year. I predicted another eighty five thousand. There's no reason to think that our contracts are gonna change.
Yep.
Um so those numbers have stayed the same. Licenses, now some of this is a little bit awkward because. The way our software transitioned and how our credit cards read licenses, the licenses are going to currently include. Uh business license, liquor license, marijuana license, business um or building permits. And court fines are all because of how our old um credit card pulled all that data in. It pulls it all in in a chunk. And so it didn't, if you paid in person, we were able to delineate exactly what you paid for. If you paid online, it all went into a giant bucket, just gave us licenses. So um this number. Is um includes all of that piece there. And what I did is I looked back to see. On licenses where we were and what we were budgeting. We were closer to the thirty thousand, thirty five thousand last year. Anne pointed out she thought fifty four was pretty high. I think that included some um building permits that were a little high. So I averaged those and brought that back down, assuming that this year was high.
Is this, is fishing licensed state? So this is just like dog license?
Yep, business license, dog license, liquor license. And so this, you know, again, this is a great example of, you know, but Anne's gonna know that better than I am. So I'm glad she pointed it out. So if there's something you see that you're like, hey, this looks fishy, let me know and we'll dig into it and see why. And that's why that number looks so high is because permit and other issues are all in that. Yeah, and it's because all of that stuff got dumped into one thing via the credit card system. So we're really trying to work with our new system to get. Specifically, this is courts, this is dogs, this is liquor, this is, and it does actually pull that in, much cleaner. So we should see a better.
They just had it dumped from your software or if we get old, the there.
Our old credit card was, that's what it did. It's, it always came in as water sewer, court fine, license. So those were your options and that's how it coded everything. Um so it is better with our new system and we'll continue to. When we look at our grant revenues, um we, the town hall, we won't be seeing. We aren't planning anything that should, that should be closed. We should, we're hoping that we have about ninety seven thousand come in from the GOCO grant. And our phase two water, the income portion of that is done.
Asking question.
Yeah.
Sorry, not to derail you, but about town hall being closed, is this? Would uh I didn't mention it, but I guess one of our plans at some point is to put the charging stations back. So would that be?
Not here, it would be at Flanders.
Totally. I mean, just here as in. Yeah, yeah, so.
Absolutely. We would probably look for more money. We would probably be looking for grants to help them. And maybe even working with VDA and seeing what they have going on with their rest staying, et cetera. But that's not gonna be part of the town hall.
So, yeah, one of the issues was that is was pouring concrete, right?
Yep.
And ADA compliance.
Yeah, yeah.
But in reality, what we need is an eighteen by eighteen concrete block to put the post in to do it. And then the power and the power is a little bit of more of a struggle, but they were there before, so.
Okay.
Um, you know, it's something I probably need to follow up on. You call Elon.
Right?
Elon.
So uh.
Did you see that? Oh, never mind.
Kind of semi side note, I am closing that, trying to close that grant this week um or next week. And hopefully that will result in a few thousand dollar reimbursement. That I hope you see that will be covering all the portions that we have paid for uh in the last two months.
Is that part of the scam revenue then?
No, it's not.
Okay.
So that would be, that will be um. What would be coming in, if we can get that, that will be coming in. You probably should see it on either the uh November report. But not into the, because we won't have anything town hall for twenty six. Um and then we have a comp plan grant that's gonna be twenty five coming in. Our match is going to also be twenty five. So you'll see that coming up in the expenditure portion.
Right.
So then, if you, so this is that piece for the most part is our general fund, our street fund. Kind of our broader picture of administration from the town. Parks and rec brought in about twenty. We're gonna stay at twenty. Water and sewer revenue, so you can see what sewer brought in and what water brought in. Now, um just make a little side note here on the water that we're gonna talk about that a little bit more. When we talk about the phase two water progression and how we're going to manage paying for the phase two water. Because you have to remember, we cannot pull money from another fund to cover water. And if we don't look at how we're gonna meet that expenditure, we can't break even on our water.
Can I back up to one? So the um the specific ownership tax?
Yes.
It says it is specific ownership is, and this is in Colorado, annual tax paid. In place of a personal property tax of vehicles. So it's passenger vehicles. Which is eighty five percent of original MSRP, light trucks, heavy commercial vehicles and licensed trailers and campers.
Hey, and I don't know how that trickle down comes to us. Like if it's from registrar, the county registrar, they don't, I'm not a hundred percent sure. But I'd have you to do that research if you're interested.
Maybe, maybe I missed something, but here, under other grants. Say something about that.
So other grants, we were closing up some of our grants that had been carryovers from the last few years. So if you look in twenty five, twenty twenty five year end projections, that is. Money that had come in that was the end of like Flanders Park or tidying up a siren and grant. So it's stuff that we. We didn't actively work on very much, but came in this year. But we won't, I'm not projecting anything. You know, if we start a new grant, then we'll start looking at how we're gonna fund that separate of this budget.
Gotcha.
So this is only this projects we have active and the grants that we have active. Okay, so when we're looking and then you can see there, you were talking about the very bottom line is your community center revenue. So we, that's our bottom line. We projected forty seven um for the end of the year if we stay with our plan. And again, as we've talked about, we don't have solid numbers so that we don't have a trend line. We're just doing a mathematical adjustment off of our actuals. And that we're uh for August, actual, end of August, we were thirty one, seven fifty four. And that's just a mathematical equation to get to that forty seven thousand. And the forty five was a projection based on the possibility of people drawing back, pulling back a little bit. As far as party, you know, having a party or an event, that would be something that would be relatively easy to. Uh pass on if you're feeling, you know, if you're tightening your belt a bit.
And so was the ten thousand dollars under miscellaneous?
That income is, I can look for you.
Well, the other thing, the community center thing wrangled with is, oh, my shoe's looking, I was gonna. Go ahead. I was gonna say, if we do get some drops in the revenue for the community center, then the community center committee. They go back and try and increase bookings and warranty fees. Like, who knows how bad the economy is gonna get? So there, there's that switch up that we can take recommendation from them.
So that was actually the sale of a vehicle. So there was a piece of equipment that was sold um early in the year. And that's not something that we have planned, but that's what's on there. And then we have some other, uh another figure in there that. Was a transfer from other funds. That figure actually comes from a transition from our old software to our new software. When we were trying to make sure that our fund balances were reflective and honest as they could be. The data that we were pulling from our old software um didn't seem to reflect that. So we pulled the information from previous audits and this year's audit and we inputted that into our new software system. So that three thousand dollar piece was a movement of money throughout funds. So it's looking, it is being combined with that seven thousand dollars for the sale of assets. So it shows as an income here, but it's really just a money shift to get us on track so that things are. We want things to be clean and we want every, every line item to be correct. And that was one of the things that we worked with, with Cassel.
So the seven thousand uh twenty five.
That was a truck or a piece of equipment sale.
He sold a.
I thought that was a miscellaneous.
Yes, that's in there.
Same way. Okay.
Sold a snow power something.
Yeah, I think it was the.
I think it's something to do with snow, yeah.
Can I, what's um, sorry if you said, sorry about that. What's a couple of examples of other revenue sources?
So uh one of the things that we would, the one of, the biggest one for us is interest and that's coming from our investments. We have investments with Colorado Trust and those interests, those income, um the income from the interest there. Is sixty thousand, last year was eighty five thousand. Um so we, that is one of our main sources. Now, to clarify, we have not at this time pulled any money out of that investment. So we've rolled all of that, that profit or that interest income back into the investment. Um so if we got to a point where we were having to pull from reserves and significantly pull money from what we have invested. We would see that income interest reduce. But as of right now, we're just recommitting that back to our um. Into our investment to continue to try to make some money. And as you can see, that did um come down quite a bit, just, you know, following interest rates, et cetera.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions on revenues?
What are some of those investments?
All of our investments are being managed by something called Colorado Trust. Um and I have a full book binder I could get out for you if you wanna review it. Um they manage. I was gonna say it's pretty.
That's what I was envisioning, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, getting into the complex, but then that's where our um investment money is held. And that's a large trust that um is managed, manages municipality incomes and money. And that is where when we dropped Sigma, we rolled all that Sigma money into the Colorado Trust.
This retirement fund suit?
It is not.
Separate, okay.
Okay, so then the next page, so we get past severance tax, mineral tax and marijuana tax. The next topic is thinking about the difference between fixed obligations and discretionary expenses. So. Are we all there? Sheila, did you find where we're at here? I was, I'm only asking because you might, she looks a little bit different than yours, gee. Keep going, keep going. Several pages. Keep going.
One more.
Sorry, I wanted to.
Like page one, page two, page three.
Um they're in the folder right here that says need to be signed. Um, okay, so thinking about fixed obligations, those expenses we have to pay, right? And the, the idea behind fixed obligations is if we don't pay these, the town shuts down. So there are things that we should pay. Let's say we should pay for a new stop sign if we need it. But if we don't pay for a stop sign, it's unsafe, it's probably not the most ideal, but it won't shut the town down. If you don't pay salaries, the town shuts down. Insurance, utilities, chemical and lab studies for water and sewer. If we don't pay those things, the town shuts down. If we don't pay our match requirements, our loan payments. You know, there will be not only repercussions, but it will, it would shut us down. So our fixed obligation, that's what you need to be thinking about. What do we have to pay to keep the building and the town running?
What do, uh, what question? What do we have leases on? Equipment? We don't have it on buildings, right?
Right, that's correct. We have, one is on a um, the Conica coffee machine.
Okay.
And we have.
Comes with repairs.
And then we have uh tobacco and loader, let me. I get the cap bill and then it has some numbers and it's like, we have three pieces of equipment that are under a lease. Um and our other major obligations are to the water land that we had taken, we took out for phase one. And to the solar panels, which was a, a ten year, I believe, and we're on like year five. Okay, and then our discretionary, oh, did you have a question?
I'm assuming these are in order.
No, they're just sort of. Right, and then discretionary would be, you know, keeping the parks nice, having the sprinklers going. Education, improvements, new equipment, any of our big capital projects. Um you know, the sheriff's contract technically falls into their street maintenance, so man chloride, patching, all of those sorts of things. There's a lot of things in the category of discretionary that we should do. We should keep our streets nice. We should make sure that you can see our stop signs. But if we don't do it, it won't shut the town down. That's the difference between our discretionary and fixed. Does that make sense? So the next couple pages have some other just different examples. Um when we looked at bleachers, the original, you'll just see that some of them, you know, some of the numbers that have come out. Hey, the original bleacher um. Piece of information was, was based on the maximum amount of replacing all of the bleachers and all of the seating in Joel Ralph Park. We can see after talking with SIRSA, working with some different companies, we have two large units and we have five small seating units. So the large units are around nine thousand and then the smaller units are something else that we can look at. So better, right, than the sixty thousand we looked at for replacing every single unit. But bleachers is an interesting one because it is a required change if we keep them. But it is a um optional. We don't have to keep them, right? So it's in the in-between.
We don't have to keep bleachers.
We don't have to keep bleachers, but we can't keep the ones we have. So we either need to fix them or get rid of them. So it's not fixed, it's not really, it's kind of in the in-between, okay? And the reason the bleachers became a requirement is because our insurance is tied to the safety of the bleachers. So there's certain requirements that we're going to have to meet to get our insurance. And insurance is a fixed obligation. We don't have insurance, we should cast. So we'll have those things that are tied. And the bleacher situation is one.
And how many, you say we need five?
We have two big bleachers now and we have some seating, other seating options, benches, little small units out there. That we could choose to replace or not. Some of the units are in the dugouts. They would possibly be covered by one of the grants that we're looking at to replace with, to work on the ball fields. So those are things just to think about. Um.
And the school district is no partner in any of this?
No.
We, just to be fair, the school district does get a portion of the maintenance and all the things that we do out there that we build them for annually.
Okay.
Yeah, but in terms of new stuff, not really. But we did apply for the Daniels Fund. I have, I won't know till December, but there's no reason that we couldn't get it, at which point that would help cover and they would split sort of the match with us.
What's potentially the uh grant?
Uh fifty thousand.
Oh, that's a lot of bleachers.
No.
Thirty thousand each.
Right, so if we need five, that's forty.
Yeah.
We could do a couple.
They're used as for the high school baseball games at our Escalante.
I say scrap, bring a yard chair.
Right, so that's right, something to be thinking about when we're moving.
People bring camp chairs to the softball tournaments, don't they? And all the soccer games in, in uh Parque de Villa and stuff, they just bring chairs.
Yeah, it's definitely something to be thinking about. So that item, the building maintenance, which would be the exterior. Of the water treatment plant and the electricity upgrade are both issues that need, are being required by SIRSA. We need to upgrade, we need to do the maintenance to the exterior and we need to upgrade the electricity. Those are two items that are connected to the safety and maintenance of our building. And so when we move forward to expenditures, you will see them under a fixed obligation because they are tied to our insurance. Um and I did actually get our liability insurance quote for next year. After I printed these packages and it, the quote was uh sixty thousand for our property casualty and work miss cop issue. So we're working really hard to make sure we can keep paying that. The property, so we call it on, yep, that's our property and casualty and work comp and our, our big total on that was six. Now, one thing I can say, we've done a lot of work in the last month, two months on um getting some, some credits. For next year um and, and working ahead with their auditors to make sure that we're, we are hopefully gonna be applicable. That we're building. So we worked really hard to bring that number down. It won't come down until the twenty seven cycle. But we're really hoping that we can see some differences there. but we're really hoping that we can see some differences there. Okay?
Yeah, so an example of property casualties, we made a claim when the youngster drove through the door.
Oh, right. All right, just, and so those next few pages were some examples of things that you'll see when you get moved forward to the expenditure portion. Do you have questions about fixed versus discretionary? And why some things are going to be fixed even though they seem discretionary? It did pop on, though, I think you're right. And this is going to be the same. You have the small print with all the details etc. And if you shoot forward a couple, um, pages, you'll see that there's a larger print version, just doesn't have all the comments and historical data on that. Yep, so if you flip forward just a bit.
Why am I looking at this one right now?
That's the small page.
So one, um, when we start moving down the list, um, let me make sure I'm on the right. So first we have, uh, the mayor's and trustee education. You can see that we didn't put any money into that in twenty-five. That's something that I think is probably prudent to, uh, plan some money for because we are going to have a new board education here. Because we will have some new people coming on. We are going to need to think about how we're going to pay for that education piece. And so, you know, it is my opinion that it's prudent to budget for that. But again, all of the numbers that you see here that are under the proposed budget are my assumptions and things that I, I felt based on being conservative and, um, just thinking about how we're spending money. If you disagree or you have input, throw it out there. If you think this is too high of a number, um, you know, I don't, because we have had a pension of losing scanning, I think that it's probably reasonable to think that we bring somebody in to do this education piece. Um, you know, we're trying to get up to speed as fast as we can, but with budget season and the election coming up, trustee, uh, board prep might not be something that we get our education on. So that's why I went with twenty-five hundred.
There is.
I will also tell you that Region Nine is trying to put something together for all of the municipalities.
And, and in the budget, I, I maybe haven't seen it down there, but is it, is there, uh, election costs?
Yes, there will.
Yes, but that was based on an MOU with the county and the county told us today they're not participating, so.
Yeah, yeah, repeat that because I think we were having the discussion.
So, um, yeah, Kim Bressel gave us notice, Heather, uh, Alvarez of Makers put out there, hey, let's get together and talk about the election. And Kim followed that up with, we, the county is not going to help you.
Every town is not.
Which before they would tabulate the votes, take things like that, and they bailed out on all the, all the towns. So they're not doing Makers or Cortez or us.
They will be working with those other towns to look at the equipment that we need.
If you have to have a tabulator, you have to have a electors. All of those things are.
For our board elections?
Yes.
Or any initiatives, yeah.
Why is that? What was the reasoning behind that?
They said they don't have time.
Right.
On the time?
That's the, that's the message.
So we're gonna try to, we're really gonna try to work, uh, and we reached out to some other resources and we're gonna try to work with the other communities to, uh, try to collaborate and share some costs. But we may want to consider increasing our, our, uh, I think, our budget for what we may have to spend.
We just found out today, so. Previously, you mean, have, have towns like, you know, rent a clerk, you know? Rent your machine and have, like have towns pay it into the county?
Well, we had an MOU with them and then they would bill us back.
Right, alright, okay.
They put it all together, they had it, they organized it, so all of that cost is there, they bill us back. So this time it could be maybe, you know, Cortez's home rule, so they have a different set of rules, right? But, uh, both Makers and us are on, um, statutory, so there's a role around it. Heather's been through it a million times, so we're gonna lean in there, um, and see, get her help and. So.
So there might be some added for the rental of equipment, but, you know, we'll be.
By the time we get to the thirteenth, all those answers are forty.
And that is way over in here.
Wow.
Fall perhaps.
Yes, they're like, hmm, yeah, elections are in here.
Okay.
Elections, so.
Yeah, it is going to be in here, this giant package of stuff.
Maybe we'll see if we're just aiming around.
It really is.
I, I mean, so like every.
I know, I saw it. I know, I, I know it's in there.
Was every town have to get some rent or get on the equipment or?
We don't reach here. Honestly, I don't know enough. I've reached out to see if I can have a meeting, and Heather has reached out for some contact, or it's like, uh, people that we can work with. Companies that do this, this, that, do, so it must be.
Oh, yeah, it's not like we're having election every other day.
Right.
Finally.
Um, so moving forward, board payments, I'm not anticipating to change from where we're at this year.
It's a raise.
We don't get a cost of living rate?
Right? I know. Staff salaries and benefits, uh, you can see there that we actually have a slight drop. Part of that is because we have changed from having a full-time, um, building inspector to having somebody who is contract. Um, part of that will be the change of, uh, Tammy, part of that will be, uh, changes with Randy. So I know that this is hard, I mean, it's not convenient to flip back and forth, but at the end of the expenditures section, there is a page that is called staff salary and benefit assumption. These are the assumptions I made when I created the budget. So when you're thinking about doing the personnel budget, um, these are some of the assumptions that are in those numbers. So thinking that Randy is planning on retiring, we did a six-month at Randy's salary and we did a six-month with RJ's salary. Um, we are thinking that the replacement position there will be an entry level position. The clerk treasurer would be combined. Anne is planning on retiring at the end of twenty-sixth. And her replacement would be an administrative assistant and then transition into training. There's a three percent cost of living raise applied. The health insurance cost increased thirteen point five percent, which sounds super crazy, but the average was thirty. So we're significantly low. The other thing that we did do with our health insurance is we did step down one benefit plan, so that increased each of the staff members, um, out-of-pocket max, their deductible and their co-pays slightly. Um, it wasn't a huge increase, but we did that and we also redo, removed RMR, which was a, um, reimbursement pro- process that we would do for people who didn't make co-pay. So by reducing those two things, we were able to make our health insurance break even. So that was ultimately about a thirteen percent reduction in cost, so we should be coming across this year. And then our assumptions also assume that each of our main, maintenance members will have around a hundred and twenty-five hours of, um, overtime. And that's that weekend work that they do, um, or any emergencies, and that's based on an average of what they have been doing in the past.
And that, is that, um, I guess I was thinking about this again, about the trash this weekend. Is there somebody on call every weekend?
There is.
That can be contacted in.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, well, and it's, it's, it would be better for us to set that up because essentially, you have.
Oh, sure.
You have to do sanitation and, um, maintenance, I mean, water treatment plant reports every day of the week. So they have to come in no matter what, but obviously they all live in Cortez. I think RJ's closest, maybe Justin's up on the hill, but, you know, there is a lot of back and forth time if we're calling out all the time.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure.
But we could say, hey, this is when this needs to be done. You know, it's a little bit better communication that we can tighten up with, with Anne.
Yeah.
She does all the park permits. But that's what I, I wrote down in my notes, to try and find a disposal container that we could have there.
It's gonna put the responsibility back on our staff to be there on the weekend or to, to do the follow-up with these gazebo rentals, cause.
Right.
You know, we're there, we're constantly turning off the lights and going over and pick up stuff, and now we're just trying to watch it because of theirs. Right, yeah, okay.
All right, so that, those, those are the assumptions I made when I did the personnel budget. So you'll see that that has collapsed into a one line, that's just for privacy, because we did it. I, the number is based specifically on everything going on in the detail, and how we came up with this data to try to be as accurate as we possibly could. Any questions on that and where that number came from? Okay, so moving on, the parks department, you can see, is broken down, um, by your line items and how we have spent money or how it was reported. One thing I will say as a caveat, same as with the, um, some of the stuff that happened with revenues, is as things transitioned from our old software to our new software, some of the codes got combined, um, because we had, I don't know, like, two thousand line items on the old one, and I was, it was so convoluted. So we now have like six or seven parks line items instead of twenty-five. So some may be mildly higher or mildly lower, um, than we thought, but you can see that we're just watching the trends line. So parks electricity was eleven thousand dollars this year. We go ahead and go up a thousand just because. Um, and so one of the notes you can see, if you look at the very small sheet, is every item on our expenditure line has a five percent increase factor. Just making an assumption based on sort of like global economic patterns. So what you'll see is our actual in August, our projection, which is our mathematical computation based on our actual, and then a five percent addition for the majority of line items. Now, some of them, um, we have, uh, very specific, like you can see administrative consulting and planning, we went from five thousand, six hundred to fifteen thousand. That's because we're looking at doing a comp plan, and we know if we're doing a comp plan, we're paying for some help to make sure that that comp plan is what we need it to be, and that's where those numbers have fallen. Generally, that piece has picked up our grant, um, assistance. So when Ken comes in and helps us write grants, that falls under that line there.
How come Joel Rowell is blank?
So the blue, um, is going to be folding through to our discretionary fund. Oh, which will be getting to. Okay, okay. So some of these things, the things that I have put in are things that I would consider, the numbers that are there are things that I would consider, um, things that we need to spend the money on where the town will shut down. If we do not pay for the parks electricity, we're gonna lose, I mean, there won't be electricity, there will be problems with the bathrooms, etc. Right? So you'll see that as you come down the comp year lease, we have to pay it. We've already committed. Telephones, we have to pay. Um, administrative purchase services are, uh, things tied to payroll. Some of the, the other like principal investments, there are things, other outlier community, or, um, entities that help us with our processes. So that is the fee we pay to the payroll department, to our payroll.
There's a payroll.
It's called the payroll department, the other grango, I know. Right? And, uh, ideally we'll be switching to our, to sell and doing it in-house, as a step to try to cut back on that. But it would be other, like, let's say, principal investments is who takes care of our retirement plan. So those fees for those people are, are into those numbers there. Um, so trash removal, electrical fees, the audit.
What are the subscription dues?
So subscriptions and dues are professional, um, requirements for different roles. So the guys with their water, uh, we have CC, CMCA, which is the clerk that we've paid for. It would be, um, what other memberships can you think of that we have?
Um, Region Nine, we have a membership, um, I don't think who else.
And then, um, yeah.
Keep going.
I know, I was gonna say, I can pull, I, but I would be happy to pull a list, specific list for you, but it's, it, they're generally professional development and, uh, professional organizations. Um, oh, we have tried to keep some of the things like bank fees down. Now you'll notice advertising and legal, the sort of an interesting, that one has, it is up three times. It was twenty-seven hundred, it goes to seventy-five hundred. That's specifically for election. Because all of those, now, every, as of right now, the community is still insisting that we put all of our public notices in the paper, um, because they have to be.
We have the chance to vote it down and everybody wanted to keep it.
No, I think it's important.
In a paper.
Yep, so to have those go to the newspaper, um, in previous election years, so I looked back to see what the cost was, it was around seventy-five hundred dollars for the costs of all of the advertising and public notices to have that in the paper.
Yeah.
So this year was about three.
Probably want to look at, we want to update some really old ordinances. And we did a few this year, but those have to be published in full. And if you remember, like the liquor one and the nuisance one, those are like a whole page in the paper, which is, you have to publish it at least twice, so.
And, and you can't do a little reference?
We could, but we, well, and there's some, I'm looking into, um, a legal way to, there's a couple towns that I talked to at first schools that have changed that. And so, um, there's a couple ways, and I'm trying to figure out, you know, doing that. So.
But so as, until we make changes, we need to publish, and if we're publishing, that's our cost. So we, we've, we're looking at about twenty-seven hundred dollars for this year, just, just to be doing our public notices in the paper. Um, so contributions, you'll see, isn't, you know, not a very descriptive line. Those contributions, that is the money that we have given to other community projects. A nine, there's just re, um, search and rescue, the library. So that number is something that could be, you know, you can consider more flexible. It doesn't necessarily need to be a fixed amount. It's an amount that we've committed to in the past. Um, the treasurer's fees are not in-house fees, those are to the state. Not, those are, so those are fees related to payments that come in and the fees that we pay to process that. Um, you can see that there's an open space there for administrative education. We now know, so I'll just tell you, when you look at the liability insurance, some of them are crossover because each fund has to pay its share. So I've tried to combine some of it, so this general operations is picking up general fund and it's also picking up street fund, um, because of how we pay out, but I believe, or maybe some of it's over here, but it's not balanced. You'll have to add liability from each fund to get our total value of liability. Because each fund needs to pay for that. And one of the things you will see when we get to community center is because we've now pulled that off of its own entity, this year it did not pay for its share. So next year we will need to plan for it paying for its share of the liability insurance, which will be a huge hit to the community center as far as possible, yeah.
So what is a treasurer's fees?
Those are the fees that this, we pay to the state for cutting certain checks, their treasurer fee. So if they send us, like, yep, they'll, they'll send us a check for some of the taxes and they'll have a several dollar fee, ten dollars or whatever each check. Um, you can see that on the next page, the sheriff expenses are still blank. Those are gonna be up to you when we move on to the next portion. The solar panel is something we've committed to. Obviously, any of the holiday projects that we do, lights, eggs, etc., isn't budgeted yet. Something that will be optional. Getting to grants, these are the grants that, this is the amount that we are expecting to have go out in comparison to what we have come in. So if you think about having a match for the comp plan, we said we were anticipating twenty-five thousand come in and sixty be the overall cost. So you can see that our match would have been fifty. If it was a fifty thousand dollar project, we're talking about our match for that program being twenty-five. They're giving us twenty-five. And the extra ten is for other aspects of, um, research and costs that would be going into it, that would land outside of the grant total. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So when we look at, um, phase two water, you can see how much we're planning on having go out for that, or fishing is fun, or the Go-Go Grant. And you subtract the amount that we're anticipating coming in from that particular revenue. And that's what the town will owe for that line item. Okay?
Grants are fun.
They are not fun. All right, moving down in this section, there were some things that I took in that are really flexible, such as traffic signs. We have done a traffic, or we, RJ went ahead and did an evaluation of the streets and have. Has presented some data to us about the amount of signs. So on September sixteenth, they did a complete sign, street sign condition and location check. And they had four critical stop signs that needed immediate change and five stop stop signs. That were considered critical and needed replaced soon. We've replaced those already. And we pulled the two extra stop signs out of the sign, street signs budget for this year. And we had some in in reserve, so we paid for two this year. Coming up, we have six stop signs that are non-emergent replacement, but should be replaced within the next year. And then multiple named and numbered street signs in need of replacement due to severe fading and no longer readable. As well as multiple named and numbered street signs that may replace due to fading and cracking that are still visible. But on a schedule, they should be changed out based on our budget group. Then from this point forward, they will be implementing a sign inventory of location and type of sign and replacement dates that things are indicated. So that's a project that the maintenance team is working on and their result. So when you're looking at the street signs in the budget, it does say sixty two hundred dollars. We spent six thousand this year, that's not counting the two stop signs that we just recently bought. That number, of course, is flexible and up to you guys.
How much is a stop sign?
Uh, I think we spent nine hundred dollars for two, so maybe about four fifty.
It's not too bad.
So we do get a specific kind of coding and and and. Moving down through streets, you can see that we have vehicle maintenance and equipment maintenance. We have some more of our leases there for the backhoe and. The joy cat, joy.
Front and motor.
I just pay for it.
Keep in mind that we do most of our maintenance in-house.
Right.
So RJ can work on diesel, Justin can work on regular as well as Randy.
So our equipment, most of our equipment maintenance is equipped is parts, because we're not paying for external. Depreciation is really more of an audit number, but that's not included. You can see street lights, hatching, weed control, street paint and mag chloride are all blue. Because those are all gonna be up to you guys when we move forward.
Yeah, they're still using glycerate on weed control.
Oh, really? Water, we have some of the public works education. The reason that that we are would like to request that number is because RJ and Audra are testing up. To continue to carry the same licensure that was carried by brand. So they were doing some testing to meet those public, to meet those goals for us. And so that's where that public education comes in. Mandatory, yeah, mandatory for us is the lab fees and the chemicals. Those are things that we have certain items we must test regularly.
Can I ask a question, like ask a question about, uh, can we get a list of chemicals that are being used?
Absolutely.
Yeah, cause I know there are a couple that are outdated and I want to make sure we're not getting those.
On which part, the weed?
What?
Or which part? Water or weed? Oh, drinking water.
Yeah. Let's see. And then we have the water meter and fire hydrants. So those replacements, like Lee said, some of those fire hydrants are already tied into the phase two water project. But anything outside of that would have to be budgeted for separately. Not blue, because that's something you guys will get to look at. Equipment maintenance, ground maintenance, and then here's our big cost. We have our building repair and the electrical upgrade. Those are going to be items that must be done this year. The preliminary estimate for the building upgrade was sixty thousand. And the electrical upgrade is being split with Empire Electric and our habit fifty. So that's a hundred and one, that is pretty, you know, we need to do that. Not only just to keep our equipment updated and safe, but also to meet our insurance requirement.
So the electrical total is a hundred thousand?
It's a, yeah, for an upgrade. So they have to upgrade the entire system coming in to the water plant.
I mean, we've seen it, it looks like it was developed by NASA in the sixties.
Yeah, so that whole, yeah, that whole piece is gonna have to be redone. So it was at least we're getting, we're getting to split it.
Okay.
So that's it. And then we can see that we have some debt service on the water land.
Yep.
Uh, sewer, same, we need electricity, lab fees. And the chemicals that they use there, those are must haves to make sure that things go. And then plants, maintenance, plant maintenance, parts and supply, some of that's a little bit of a crossover. As far as getting those details out of Houston, so those numbers should be more accurate in the next year. Because I believe that some of that maintenance and parts and supplies kind of got muddled in the transition. And so we're trying to get that cleaned up by doing a line item audit, but that's pretty lengthy. And hopefully, what we'll see is for twenty six, that'll be cleaner.
Can I just, I got a question?
Absolutely.
Not gonna like this, but it's okay. So I'm gonna ask again about the generator.
Yes.
Because the backup generator for the water plant. So it's a good thing that we're getting this electricity taken care of. Cause I imagine that's gonna use them quite a bit of electricity. But what I want to know is when are they gonna come out and do the startup? So that all the parts function properly, cause it needs to be, it needs to be primed. You can't just start it up in the middle of an like, of an emergency.
So we are working via, I believe it's Matthews?
Yeah, Matthews.
And we are calling them at least monthly, you say, where are we at with this? And we are getting a ton of pushback from the company.
Who's Matthew?
So that's the electric company. And they're working directly with the company who installed it to try to help us with this.
Who's the company that installed it? Cushman, they're out of Canada. The relationships between Canada and the U S States these days, I might could make sure before we see this.
Is Culver Maintenance part of street maintenance?
Culver Maintenance, yes.
Part of some costs of that, yeah.
And then your final segment is the community center. And so you can see the biggest change in number here is gonna be the insurance. So. Previous to this year, when it was not its own fund, it was enveloped under the general fund, same as parks. So parks was its own, was is a subset of general. And community center used to function as a subset of general. When it, we made it its own fund, we are trying to make it stand on its own, we had its own checking account. Its money goes to it and in a loan. So what the red, every bit of revenue that comes in from the community centers. Applies to the community center, there's no, there's no cross, it doesn't come to the town and leave there. But in trying to make that number be as accurate as possible. In previous periods, we charged only the janitor and the manager to the community center. And all other staff, hours and time, insurance, other costs such as basic waste management costs. Were absorbed by the general fund. So as the years progressed, we've gone ahead and had the waste management fee for the community center pulled out separately. So you can see that it has its own trash removal line item and budget. Uh, their own supply and budget, their own maintenance, those maintenance are larger ticket items such as the painting. You can see the manager and the janitor are there. And then we have the insurance. And that is a portion of the insurance that we were paying for the whole town. Now, we have over, it looks, I should say, historically, it appears that the majority of the time that we've split. Costs, so let's say the internet, we pay for the internet. And every entity that we have utilizes the internet. So we generally split that as a as a four-way cost. So if it's a thousand dollars, two fifty gets charged to the general fund, two fifty to streets, two fifty to water and two fifty to sewer. As we move forward and I'm working with our insurance provider, I'm gonna hopefully see that we can get a more specific number. That's a community center driven insurance number. So that what the community center is paying for is solely the community center. Uh, we have been able to pull almost every other piece of data out from the larger, go for the community center. As of right now, the insurance number that you see there is a portion, it's less than a fifth. But it, we don't have the exact number on that. So that could change slightly, I would not anticipate it would change significantly. Okay? And then you'll see that capital expenditures there are. Blue, because you can make some division. So bottom line there, you see we have two hundred and seventy three thousand dollars of profit. So if you turn the page, we have our discretionary funds sheet and this is essentially where you guys make the decision. How are we spending that money? We've identified all the ways that are all the things in our town that we have to have. These are all of the things that we should have, could have. There's other things that could be added to those list. Uh, I put on a drainage plan, we could talk about a code enforcement officer. Uh, I went ahead and reduced the number of the bleachers from sixty to thirteen on my sheet. You can put it be whatever you want. Those anticipated costs are my estimates or my anticipations. That is not how you need to spend that money. There's two things you need to, I see on the sheet. One, at the very bottom, you can see that our revenues and our expenditures. For all the funds, not counting the community center, we have a net of two eighty five. Because the community center have a law, we can only budget for two seventy three with our extra. Because we are going to have to figure out how we're gonna make up for the community center law.
And why is snow removal on here as discretionary?
Okay, so this piece of snow removal is not snow removal general. This is referring to several years ago, I believe there was a huge storm. And we had to budget for extra people to come in, it cost about ten thousand dollars that year. And so that was a number that has been carried forward in the budget. We did not use any of that money this year. So do we want to, you know, as we're looking at this list, you guys have two hundred and seventy thousand dollars to allocate. For how we want to spend taxpayer money. My recommendation would be to go back and pull your sheet out right from the very beginning, where you made your notes about what are our priorities. But your priority sheets, right above how you're gonna spend your discretionary funds, and this is where we decide. You guys decide, how do we spend this money in our community? How do we spend this money and meet our vision? We know what matters to our town, we know what we need in our town. We also know that sign, mag chloride, hydrants, some of those things are pretty big priorities. We also know that we have a two hundred and eighty six thousand dollar sheriff's contract. If you pull that, if that's what you want to do, we don't have money for anything else on this list. Because you have two hundred and seventy three thousand dollars to spend.
So when you think about the sheriff's contract, in the way that they're currently calculating it, right? They have a marker in a car and for whatever it sits here. So that essentially means we're paying for the S R O, right? Because she sits here all day, five days, four days a week. So we have some choices there. There's also a line in that contract that says binding arbitration, if it's an unlimited, if it goes up, it goes up for us too.
But can you, can you back up for just a minute?
Sure.
So as far as I know, from walking by that officer, four days a week, we are paying for it. But the school is, it's for the school.
Correct.
We don't have, she's not out giving tickets, she's not out doing anything else. She sits in the school most of the day, so why are they not paying for it?
I, I don't have a good answer for that.
Okay, so they park in schools regardless, like because the school's there, they are going to have an on-duty sheriff. Cause she's getting out of the car, she's talking to kids, she's, she's fourteen.
S R O is important, but you know, should that be shifted?
School research officer.
Yeah, should that be shifted, some of that cost? I don't think the school can afford it either. But I'm just telling you in the way that they calculate car time.
Sure.
I went through their numbers that Travis sent me and it's like, okay, you know, we're a half mile square town. And according to the calculations, you know, they're here driving around at five miles per hour. So you have to look at those numbers and go, what? Doesn't even make sense, so, and they're doing fifty miles a day. But I, I don't see someone doing fifty miles a day.
No.
Yeah, when you look at numbers, so that tells me that either they're sometimes driving through to go somewhere else and we're getting charged for that.
Yeah.
Or we know that we're not, we did twelve tickets in September, we did none in July, we did eight tickets in June. So it's not like our, we're getting a giant.
Everyone's never told the sheriff or the department what to do, but you know, that's one of the biggest issues for me is that, you know, we wanted them there in essence for public safety. We see doing a great job if it's crosswalks, things like that. But you know, I can't even count the number of times when I'm walking the dog or whatever. And they're sitting on the side of the road and people fly by them at sixty five miles an hour. And they just stay on their phone and don't go give tickets. So if we're only getting twelve tickets in a month, I mean, I see at least twelve speeders a day. So we're not really getting much paying for the buck there.
Sure. I, I'm just wanted to make sure you're informed about.
So you say the two hundred and eighty six thousand dollars the county wants for the sheriff's contract includes.
School.
I don't know for sure, because they'll tell me that it's not. But if you're calculating time off a tracker in a car.
Right.
Then I can't, how do you separate the S R O from everybody else? So you could decide, we only want to pay for one of it. I will also tell you that Steve Smith is back on October sixth. So, yeah, he's dedicated to here, we've had a. I can't remember that. Simmons, I think is the guy that we've had helping pitching in, but he's also got other duties. So, you know. You can make that contract, we can make that contract to be reflective of what you all want. And say, and then send it to the sheriff and send it to the county and then.
I thought we made those recommendations last meeting.
Maybe you made or recommended, well, we didn't, cause one, you get, you can't, you know, we talked about it, but it wasn't voted on, or so.
But we had it, we had it in the guideline.
Sure, yeah, and if you remember what the sheriff said in executive session.
I do.
So the, when we're looking at the big, the bigger picture budget, you know, you guys can see how much money we have that's for discretionary. And I made a list of things that I kind of pulled from the budget, there were those bluer, those little blue highlights. Um, and I put some numbers based on previous costs, some historical data. None of those numbers are written, it's are in stone. This is one hundred percent your guys' worksheet. So you give me the feedback and then I'm gonna plug that into the budget and create a workable budget with that data.
Yep.
So behind this, there is some information about the bleachers, if that's a path we're going down. Um, I also have some of the other receipts, et cetera, for budget line, budget items that have been requested. You know about the sheriff's contract.
I thought the advertising was not discretionary, we have to do it like that, dude.
So this, this is a number that we need to decide, is this something that. Are you comfortable with us going ahead and budgeting seventy five hundred assuming election? We need to think about our bigger costs, so, um, you know, yes, it's required.
Okay.
It is required, but if we don't do it, will it shut the town down? No, we'll probably get in trouble, but.
And do we really not have an E U D in town?
Uh, we do not have an.
Or E U D?
No, that is correct.
A what?
There's a lot of brands, I think.
There's nothing there. Here's the next page, if you look at the next one, is the community center. You can see that, um, the total revenue, oh, that's okay, it's all right. Uh, the reason it's set up like this is because I wanted you to see like the, when we looked at the whole big picture comedic, uh, the. The, we looked at the big budget, right? And some of it was down by line by line. Big picture, community center needed forty five thousand.
That's true.
And we're are based on what we have here on the estimate, we're estimating that they're gonna, their expenditures are fifty seven thousand. That means they are negative twelve thousand. But that is something we have to think about when we're doing our budget, is how are we going to? Pay for the deficit that's there. And it, and that needs to be playing into our picture. The second piece, if you'll look at that next page, is the water fund. And it, and that needs to be playing into our picture. The second piece, if you'll look at that next page is the water fund. And that is because the water fund must sustain on its own. Phase two water is on our list of priorities. It's on list of commitments and it's something that we've spent a lot of money on. The issue that's at hand, if you look at what we have under the line twenty-five is what we've done. Line twenty-six, which is your middle column. If we do not request an increase, as recommended by S G M.
Yep.
We will not break even.
But we will not get along. So it'll kill the project.
Right.
So, so five percent is two dollars and forty-two cents a month.
Yep.
But it is something that needs to be taken into account when we're looking at the budget. If we take a five percent increase on the water bills. We will break even and can continue to move forward with these two. If we do not have a two, a five percent increase. We either need to make significant cuts in our water budget, which you've already looked at. Um, and seen what portions of that were required and what portions are, are. Are flexible or discretionary. Um, or else we will not make, we will not make break even and we cannot request a loan. So those numbers are here for you to look at. And when we go back to our discretionary funds and you guys are allocating your money. Just keep those two factors in mind. The community center did not break even or will not break even. And we do need to think about, are we going to move forward if it's a five percent increase in water? And if we're not, how are we going to cut? This amount of money so that we can continue to meet our, our required payments for water fund. And be able to get our loan. So we're talking about cutting a minimum of sixteen thousand dollars. Out of what we have already all allocated in this fund.
Without increase.
That's correct. So that's, so those are things for you to be thinking about while we're moving forward.
Yeah, so this is twenty twenty-six on the water plus the five percent.
So if we do twenty-six with no increase, we are short sixteen thousand.
Yeah.
We do our five percent and we sweep up.
So it's twenty twenty-six with the five percent.
Right.
And has the community center, have they been like on their own for a whole year yet?
They have not. So they are, well, let me say they are not, not a full. This year from January to, to, to date, they are on their own. Um, and the only thing that has not been included in what we, we picked up internet. Early on, I wanna say April, that shifted to them. I wanna say their trash service shifted to them then. Um, the only thing that hasn't been significantly on their books, their sheriff's life. So they are actually, you know, they're doing solid minus that gigantic piece, but that is a huge piece for the town.
We also had two expenditures, bringing this oven replacement. And then we had, um, I remember the hot water over the bathrooms started leaking and so that had to be replaced.
Okay.
But, but they've been on their own January three now?
That's correct. Yep.
Okay.
So yeah, we're in, so one thing you can see, we have, they have their own account, they're on checking account. They have a whole of their own. Um, checks written, so everything is very cleanly connected solely to them. Um, and then the only thing that they're paying, paying in portion would be the insurance. Everything else is actually a separate check now. So we've sort of tried to work through that as the year has progressed to make sure that we're keeping that entity very, very cleanly. And so that we are really getting good data on its progress.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so those are the things to be thinking about.
Yep.
And then you guys can just throw out the ideas on how you think you wanna move forward because this is you.
Hey, can I ask you a question? Did we reduce? Contribution to other programs? Was it twenty?
So the reason that number we were, are looking at, um, it was fif- we did fifteen.
We did fifteen.
Um, but if you'll look here, senior lunch program has requested twenty thousand.
And what were we last year?
Uh, I think we gave them twenty-five hundred.
Oh.
But they have had significant amount of their funding done and they've requested twenty thousand from every municipality or entity that they work with. So essentially, and I think we could give you more details. I also believe that Kelly Hargraves is gonna be at the next workshop. To discuss how they're utilizing those funds. Um, there are some issues that have come up. Val made a great point about, they were saying we get two lunches. I believe Mankus gets three lunches, Mankus gets, our quarterback gets four lunches. We wanna talk about making an offer of a more pro-rata. We're paying our portion versus just a straight across the board twenty thousand.
Oh, cause we're paying a bigger portion.
We're all paying twenty.
Four, got it, okay.
But we're only.
Right, right.
You know, so those are some options and things that we move forward.
Rather than what I said initially, do it by the attendance at each center.
Uh, so those are some different.
If we do it by attendance at each center, that will give us a smaller percentage of the total industry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause it's a great program, but you're right, we need to do it proportional.
Or just, it's something to consider. When we look at how we're gonna spend our money, that's something that they've requested to continue their program.
And you said nobody has requested on the.
We haven't even put anything out for that yet.
Yeah, so you have to budget.
Last year, um, the recycling.
Yeah.
Uh, library and.
Fire, I mean, the.
Well, that was part of it.
I think we had. Yep.
Yeah.
There were quite a few, but we need to decide how much we're gonna do before we put that out. And if that is something that we can continue to do. So, you know, when you look at this list, when you look at our vision, our priorities, all of the things that we've been presented with here. We can, you know, the thing, the things I wanted to get across is our revenues aren't going up. And we don't really have a space for that to happen right now. We need to be conservative on what we budget that's coming in.
Yeah.
We know our expenditures are going up. And we don't have a lot of places where we can cut how we're spending. So we know what we are faced with. We know we have to pay for the water plant. We know we have to pay for the electricity. We have our wa- phase two water commitments. So when we look at this list and we think about what we want, what the community wants, what are our priorities? And what are things that we feel like we probably should do regardless, like our traffic signs? Are they discretionary? Yes. Should we be budgeting for just, for traffic signs? Should we be changing out signs and making sure that we're increasing our safety when we look at our vision and our goals? And when we think about the sheriff as a portion of our safety program. And then we look at our traffic signs. Can we do both things? And we, do we need to prioritize one over the other because we need to get more of a game for a month? This is the portion where it's all about what you guys want.
So you said, you're talking about stop signs at four hundred and fifty dollars each? Oh, what is the kind of maintenance you're looking at? I know, replacement. What is, is it something that people in the town could do?
They have to be, they're actually, um, I know unfortunately, all safety signs are regulated. They have to meet a certain level of reactivity. They have a special coating on them. That's one of the things that, that, um, renders them ineffective is once we start to lose that coating. Then they're not as reflective at night and they're not always meeting our regulations. So what we do is the, the team has gone out and tried to evaluate where we have safety. We had a community member give us some, um, some ideas of places that he has seen that were, were risky. And we're trying to get them priority number one, the ones that we had to do, the ones that were critical risk, we did. We did them with this year's budget and we did them with some, some stop signs we found in the bottom of a drawer. I mean, we are, we made that happen because we had to. But what, how do we wanna proceed knowing that, you know, as you drive around and you look at street signs that you can't read? Do we wanna?
Nobody stopped for them anyway, so.
Right. So how, what do you guys wanna do with this money that you should, that, you know, this is your place?
Sure. And can we, uh, for the sheriff's commentary, on the next round, are we gonna have like maybe two or three columns to say? Okay, if you take this, this is the cost. If you have one officer, it's this.
No, this is when.
I'm gonna do this tonight.
Yeah. To have our preliminary budget.
Yeah.
So we're gonna take the information, you guys have all this information. And we're gonna take it and take your priorities from this list. And then I am gonna put it into the actual budget. And then I will try to tie out our fund balances on our, our revenues and expenditures. So that there would be something that would be workable and submittable to the state. That is what we'll have available. So.
So this is all, we have to do this right now.
Isn't it? Yep. Now, it, it's changeable. We can change it, but this is the money we have to allocate. And if this is, how do we want our preliminary to budget to look? How would these pro, these line items align with your priorities for the community?
For discretionary.
That's correct.
So, um. Are we going to do this? We go through this at home and come back the next meeting? And discuss this or what's?
We're gonna try to have this allocation line filled out tonight. If we feel that there are things that are, like, you know, if you get home, you're like, man, I actually wanna rethink that. It is something we can readdress at another meeting, but our preliminary budget has to be submitted to the board. And, and our deadline is October fifteenth, which means our submission has to be done by the thirteenth.
Let's just go through it line by line. Yep.
Yep. Or you could do it by priority. What's priority number one?
Well, not bleachers.
Maybe, maybe, maybe line by line and, you know, everyone can go yay, nay.
Yeah.
I don't think we need to chop each one to death.
Yeah.
That'd go pretty easy.
There might be a question that we don't have to.
You wanna, wanna calculate it in the name? You put the big number on? I was gonna say, well, just, I was gonna say, we put a rough two seventy-three in there and we start working our way down the list.
Yeah.
You can let us know where we're at. For the, for the eighty-hour sheriff. It'll be two, two hundred and eighty-six thousand, which means not only is that the only thing on the list, but we have to make cut somewhere else.
Yeah. Okay, start going around at that one.
Okay, so.
Two seventy-three.
Uh, how much you wanna put into the sheriff's contract?
Oh, starting in the middle?
Well, I think it's smart to start with the biggest.
Was that number and a half?
At one eighty-three.
And that was, we have discussed, discussed some numbers that would do around some numbers as a possibility. Provide coverage for a single.
One eighty-three.
What's the last word?
No, same one.
Forty-three.
Or, oh, yeah, sorry, one forty-three, you're right.
Or we do nothing and he's, and by law.
Right, right.
Well.
Right.
And then use some of that money for a, um. For a, uh.
And I think honestly, yeah, to me, that's like a quarter, half-time job.
Yeah.
I don't think that's a full.
With that, we can be combined with our maintenance position that we're looking for.
Right.
You know, we talked about a half-head maintenance guy. Could that be a combo position?
Or, or is your half, half-time maintenance this summer, you know, college student?
And we, and we do have in our south, in our staff budget, we have our seasonal summer employee budget.
Okay.
So that person who we have used in the past, who is here only in the summer, that position is budgeted for.
Okay, going back to the sheriff's.
Okay, so sheriff's contract, you have two hundred and seventy-three thousand. How much do you guys wanna allocate? Do you wanna go? Two seventy-three is how much you have to spend.
Because of the covering the.
Oh, oh, got it, okay.
Yep. Nothing.
I, I mean, I would, I would, this year I would just. Nothing. I mean, they're gonna come through by law, they have to. They're gonna respond, call nine-one-one.
What are your thoughts?
I worry about that. I think we might try and offer, like, we wanna spend half what's being proposed here. The sign to our town constituents that they're, we're trying, but we're also working with the budget here. We, we need to show, like, I think they were, but I think it was also said that if we offer that, that we're gonna get denied. But in which case, still, in which case we'll still get coverage.
We're getting covered whether we did it or not, so.
I mean, you know, that one year we did not have a contract and.
Right.
Things were fun.
Exactly.
If we went with, uh, the coverage for a single officer, that's what's suggested in a previous discussion. That would.
That means you have one thirty left for everything else.
Yep.
Right, correct. And if we eliminate the bleachers at sixty. We cover everything else in here quite easily.
Um, okay, so let's, do you guys wanna move forward with one?
I think we should try, and if they reject it, then they reject it.
Okay, so well, go ahead and we'll.
My thought, I think it's. Uh, we're meeting our needs and it's up to them if they.
One eighty-three was, no, sorry, one forty. I probably said it to you too. One forty-three. Okay, so that leaves you guys, one thirty, do you wanna look at your, you know, some of your next higher items? The team said a full mag chloride is thirty thousand.
You know what? I'm gonna look into that mag chloride because I think I can find, uh, something that's cheaper and not quite as toxic as that. And it works well, so.
We gotta allocate the money for whenever it's sold.
Right. However, you wanna do the streets.
Yeah.
Do you wanna, is that something you guys wanna do? Do you wanna do all the streets, half the streets?
Bring it up a lot. As an important town thing for dust and. We hear about asthma and everything else and.
Yeah, well, you need to.
Or whatever, I'm just saying.
Yeah, there were some, many streets that did not get hit.
And this year we did not do them all and we've spent twenty-seven thousand.
Yep.
Okay.
So you have, um, how do you, you know, you guys can decide how much do you want to give them? And they can try to do their best with what we're giving them.
Can we alternate years? You know what I mean? Like.
Yeah.
Certain streets one year, the other streets next year.
Yeah, that's good.
As a non-engineer, I would think that some streets get so much traffic that they almost have to be every year. Yeah.
Riverside, right.
So for thirty thousand, what percentage of the streets in town did we hit?
That, there, that was their estimate for, for nearly completing.
We trying to mulch Riverside?
But I don't know what percentage they do this year.
The problem with mulch though is it's wood and we're in a fire, high-fire area. And then you're gonna have streets of fire. I mean, I like mulch too, but.
What if we do? Twenty-five mag chloride.
Twenty-five thousand? We're twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five, so save our son.
And then, let's see, it looks like, okay, so the ball field lights was one of our next expenses. That, we know that the ball field lights over at the baseball field, uh, a big portion of them are burned out.
Yep.
The problem with that is, is if they, to get someone to change them, that people have to come from Grand Junction. And bring special ma- material. Uh-huh. We don't have anyone around here with the correct equipment to get up there.
Yep.
We contacted them and we worked through Matthews Electric. And the recommendation was that we went ahead and replaced the lights with the L E D lights, et cetera. And this was the quote for us, for us to fix the light.
I think it's important because we have a lot of events there and it's a safety issue as well.
With the Daniels grant? Um, you, but yeah, you, I looked at that. So we're, we're looking at scoreboards primarily. Cause we don't have any. We don't need that right now, though.
With the grant.
Right, and it's, I mean, so what we're trying to create is, um, with our current teams that come through. They travel a lot and then you get people coming from Denver on their way to Phoenix, so it brings a lot of, um, tourism in. Because all of these, you know, you got busloads of kids and all their parents and they're coming in, they're spending the night here and they're playing competitively against our teams. And then they're moving on to the next one. So it's an economic development issue.
I think the ball lights, I think the lights are important.
I do. I'm gonna do that on the scoreboard.
So we can go ahead and commit how many to add or we can just keep looking when he has.
When, when are the ball field lights ever used except S K O N A D, sub, alternative? The high school doesn't play into those.
Well, that's what we're trying to attract people to come and then they.
Right.
You know, that would be a possibility, but we, I mean, it's, I, I don't know that I would focus on, on right now. If you look at like contributions or, cause we're only, we are, um. Well, I did it a little different way, so I took the one forty-four, five hundred, which is what's left out of this. And then I subtracted, um, the five thousand, you know, when you said we're almost there.
Oh, yeah.
So the, so you have to get to one thirty-nine-five with this. And so we're, we take ten off the senior lunch.
So yeah, we can just keep moving forward. When we think about contributions to other programs and the senior lunch. You know, where do we wanna be with that? You know, we know Kelly from senior, or from social services is asking for twenty thousand. Do you know, do we wanna allocate twenty? Do you know, do we wanna allocate twenty thousand to the senior lunch program?
Yes.
Um, you know, that is, we did uh the math on the average amount of people who come. Uh throughout the year is about seven dollars and seventy cents per person. So that's approximately what we're doing.
But she's asking twenty thousand of every town?
We have the least amount of people.
Then then we need to, I like Val said.
Can we allocate and then adjust?
Yeah.
And we can allocate the twenty thousand and then. What we, you know, we're gonna meet with her, is she next workshop?
Yeah.
She'll be here, we can have some proposals of different ideas, if they're amenable to some other programs or other plans. We can always pull that cash back and put it somewhere else. So, sorry, go ahead.
Oh. Do they um contribute to any of the? Utilities that are being used over there?
Then they do pay um, I want, they pay a, they rent their space for every time they use it, and so I wanna say that was around, was it?
Fifty-four hundred.
Yeah, I was gonna say six thousand or so that they pay us for their space, so they rent the community center just like everyone else.
For the year.
Mm-hmm, so then they pay for all their time.
And that would probably include the utilities and.
Like, yeah, that kinda covers the time that they're there.
Well, I mean, you know, if um meals are like, what'd you say, seven fifty?
Yeah, about seven seventy, huh?
So, I mean, you know, like round up to ten times how many people, times. That we don't see every day is meals on wheels, so I don't know how many of those are, I'd have to check with.
Oh, okay.
And that's for this program.
Yeah, they have some of those out and deliver some meals.
So how many senior lunches?
Most of that is.
No, that's.
Twice a week, and how many people?
And I, I think like they averaged around twenty-five.
Yep.
Um, and so what we, the seven seventy is based on twenty-five people coming twice a week. For the entire year gave us approximately seven seventy.
But we don't know how many people are doing.
So I mean, we're really getting a pretty good thing for our budget.
Totally.
And we have a a lot of people who are participating in that program, I think there's a lot of value to that.
Thank you.
Thanks, Val. Um, you know, I think that you have a great idea with allocating the funds, people who wanna come. Commit to the program, and then if we can.
Yeah.
Do some kind of pirata, uh, we can always drop.
Yeah, I mean, we can talk to Kelly when she's here too, you'll have plenty of time to ask questions and determine what's, she'll have the facts. So that would be what?
So twenty, that's on your.
Five grand?
What's this here, it's twenty?
But I mean, are we gonna like allocate?
So Chris did.
Twenty-five hundred last year?
So yes, they got twenty-nine hundred.
But they lost it.
They lost their.
Right, right, so.
So we were gonna account, so what Chris suggested is allocating the full twenty thousand this year. And then if we can convince them to do a little bit more of a give and take and. Uh, we're gonna pay a little bit less for our community because we're having wet lunches.
You have one tenth of the people in Cortez.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, but that secures the spot for us if we can't make any.
And then we'll get a bonus.
Okay.
So when we come up to the workshop after Kelly's here, then we can make the adjustment.
Uh huh.
And was the county paying for this before?
And no.
Oh, triple A, that's.
Yeah, yeah, um, and it was, their funding was completely, kinda sounds like.
Energy agency on age.
There you go.
Yeah.
Is the holidays, it's not like decorations?
So that's all, yeah, whatever, we generally spend on holiday stuff, decorations, Easter eggs, candy. Which seems crazy, but it does add up to several thousand dollars every year, you know?
And we have to figure out Christmas.
Surprise, no.
We won't like these kinda calculators, I can't do.
You want a smaller one?
No, I need a big one.
Oh. With a kicker team coming out?
Uh huh, I've got one of those.
Uh, that's the only one I cannot function on those.
Okay, so where do you guys wanna go next? Looking, thinking priorities, thinking about largeness of numbers.
What is the contributions to other programs?
So those would be the canine rescue.
People, last year, the committee was Kalen and Mark, and they determined that you all voted on.
Okay.
Saying yes to what this was.
What you about last year?
And you guys have, uh, based on what we picked, so three of eighty-five thousand left.
Uh huh, I do think it's for community support, that's an important program.
Yeah. That's, I mean, we can leave it and then.
Yeah.
Yeah. We can leave it and then see what happens.
Yeah.
Okay.
And leaving what?
The contributions to other programs.
Sure.
Two seventy thousand. Um, I think we agreed that the advertising public notice is something that we need to.
By statute, we have to have somebody out there. I think the A U D, we thought about it, A U D, we have a fire station half a mile away, they have plenty.
And I don't know if the bank has one or not.
I think they do.
I mean, well, the school.
School has one.
Mm-hmm, sure. Okay, um, so thinking about the bleachers.
No.
Do we wanna just call them and?
Yeah.
We're like, hey, guys, bring your chairs?
For now, if you budget site, let's do a fundraiser.
Yeah, let's, yeah, yeah.
Fundraiser, yeah.
It's a lot of money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And town hall, seven zero there.
Henry, where are you?
Um, beauty.
Oh, yeah, beautifying, we're talking planters, I mean, you know, we were thinking about people, you know, we've had a lot of people feel upset about trees being pulled out or other things. You know. We can do stuff to make greener and more appealing. Um, you know, we talked a lot about the stop sign and how do we wanna handle that and what kinds of things are we gonna do around the stop sign? Because we don't like those barriers, is that something we wanna think about budgeting for now?
No. I think maybe next year.
I need to give Val a page.
All right.
He said he's gonna page it.
Oh, oh, that thing.
Yeah, thing.
That thing.
We didn't wonder what's gonna write on my video on it?
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about.
No, yeah, so just thinking about some of those things that have come up, you know, it is an issue that we have talked about, so it's something to think about when we're looking at our budget here.
Yeah, but what what would that cost entail?
Right.
We can budget anything you, you know, in our within.
Yeah, cuz I was thinking, we just think it and then have a big circular cement around it.
And we can, we don't have to commit to that right now, we can keep moving through the list and see what's left over.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's do that.
Green.
Okay, so then the next thing on our list is looking at education. So we have new trustees coming on, we put some of that in the budget already. Um, but we're gonna have new public works individuals, and then we have some changes in administrative staff that um are gonna re-inquire some education. Where are you guys at with that?
Yeah, and I'll say, public works is not just, it's ongoing for both streets, for wire, for sure.
Yeah, this doesn't seem like especially on the income, it seems like this has got to happen.
At least for public works.
Uh huh, for sure.
Yeah. Yeah, I would, I would.
Can't say anything about it, it seems like a pretty good guess at how much it costs, I'm sure, I'm sure administrative education costs a fair amount of money. Gotta be up to date.
Okay, yeah.
I, that had to be your recommendation, what it takes for the administrative education piece, I don't know.
It'll be clerk school.
Alright, so it's learning, you know, making sure that we are.
Yeah, but I mean, I I wouldn't know whether.
That's a proxy, that would be my my estimate based on getting through clerk school, knowing that we have um. Some CE requirement that we get a lot through SIRS that we're, you know, we're doing.
And it seems important to keep in here, is what I'm saying, right?
Okay.
I think it is.
So just leave the education as is.
What?
And then.
So education was how much? Nine total.
Okay, and then so patching, gravel, chip seal. Well.
Let's take out mag chloride and patch the streets first, how about that?
I love that.
There's a lot of holes, things that you can patch, but that mag is right, it's like, go, it feels like we put it on and it's like two weeks later, the dust. Boring about us everywhere. Over my area, it's still on Riverside, it's like the next week.
Oh, yeah?
Dusty is all hell.
That was much traffic though.
Good, I'm like, oh, sorry, it's hard to bet, it's like, it just doesn't feel like it's worth the money, like thirty thousand dollars. Ridiculous amount of money for what it really does.
Sorry, because we have so much.
Does that, yeah.
Yeah. The number one, give us all the amount of that cash and and keep moving on if it.
Well, okay, so you're complaining about it not lasting, so are you suggesting, rightly so? Are you suggesting we find an alternative for the same cost or?
That's what I'm doing.
Yeah, okay.
For less.
Cuz you you do want the dust and everything down. I do, I mean, I don't, you don't care. Personally, I think it's a problem with.
That's it.
We have people speeding a ton, sure, if you weren't speeding on the streets, it wouldn't be such a bad problem.
True.
I don't think it's, I don't create that much dust in town, going ten miles an hour at the top, it's like. There's people that go thirty-five. So they're kicking it out.
I would think we need some money.
Oh.
Or I budget for some of the heavier used.
Streets.
So maybe.
That's what we did.
We used it and then do, you know, we could do half and see if we can get some of the big street.
Yeah, I mean, I, my streets.
That's what we did.
Good for a couple of years.
All used streets.
That's who we.
We have.
And I've seen that comes up with some. Miracle organic stuff.
Okay, so what do you think? What do you wanna give to that?
Mulch.
I don't know what he's saying, what is that?
What, I'm sorry, what?
So if if we're gonna pull back a little on that, what do you guys wanna allocate for that?
Well, twenty. Yeah, I mean, how much is it? How much is it for Riverside?
What we did this year was fifty-seven now.
But what, we don't know what that included, I mean, is there like an idea of a street, a block?
Uh, we could try to find out. Twenty-six.
So like five hundred dollars?
I think nineteen miles, nineteen miles of road in Doris, I'm just not sure how many.
That's correct, so um, if I remember correctly, we did the park, J R P.
Yeah.
We did um this street, um Riverside, Hillside. Uh.
Twenty-first of Sun.
Is it really?
Yeah.
I don't know why.
For some reason, those seconds.
The uh report to give the state to get the highway user tax, tell you how many feet there are of each class of street.
Yeah, yeah, but it is, you're right, she likes my team.
Nice, you tell them I'm out.
Okay.
So what are we thinking, guys? Let's put it in.
Um.
Were some streets done more than once?
No, I don't think so, every, the streets that were.
Park was done at least twice.
No.
J R P? Was it, are you thinking they did have to pre-water?
Then they've been watered.
So they have to go in and put water down first, and then they put down the net, so they did do two hours on everything? Chris was like.
Yes, I stated confidently because we have.
Yeah, where I'm at, we have to take four too, but I'm I'm just curious to supplement that if. When they came out, if like, like I live on Fifth, and only half the street is paved, but when it's dry. It is, we sleep, we we don't have air conditioning, so our windows are open and it just coats our house.
Uh huh, yeah.
But if we, if I could get with the neighbors and say, hey, you know, grow some extra money these guys way to do this. I mean, we're not talking a lot of money here when you broke break down my street, but. Just throwing that out there on some of these little things, cuz we're getting, I'm new here, and we're getting a lot of new people up. And these are, some of this stuff is low enough cost that we.
We have the committee fundraiser ahead over there.
So what was everyone saying?
So, or do we want to go with Dick to start, say? Just walk.
We're not complaining, we can take care of it.
Alright, so if we're fifteen and we're coming up to patch, patching gravel, chip seal, we have sixty-three five left.
Sixty-three thousand?
We do need to patch for.
We do need patching.
Yeah, the pot holes.
That is, that's really important.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are we keeping those done?
The ten?
Yeah.
So we did some painting?
Yeah.
So what you have left?
Fifty-three thousand left, yeah, so I mean, you guys have plenty to work with here as far as we're coming into the bottom weight. Um, but this doesn't necessarily mean this is all, like, we could potentially, we still talked about having um a code enforcer. We did talk potentially about a half of a maintenance physician. Um, drainage plan, community center support. Um, you know, we know that the community center is down twelve thousand-ish, so how are we gonna support them? So, you know, those aren't, those things aren't in here yet too, so we, just because these are here, they were some suggestions. And definitely, is there other places we wanna spend money or need to spend?
Because if you take the rest of these, you still have like twenty-five.
So I'm being an outlier, asking this question, but we have had discussions for a couple of years now. For the property that we possibly wanna take to on Eleventh.
Oh, yeah.
Does that need to be in here at all or no?
We should make that into a block. Dog park. Well, we have to get the. I mean, it's got a two hundred fifty thousand dollar lien on it.
Yeah, okay.
So you need to pay some house and.
We see what we can do on that.
Right, yeah.
Um.
Alright.
So, I mean, other, does anyone have any other ideas and things they want?
Well, we got weed cleanup, does town cleanup cost anything?
So the, there is.
Is there dump fees or anything that we need to?
There is, and.
So I think, I think.
We want street painting and everyone traffic signs, what's trash cleanup assistance?
So that's the extra cost right there.
For the.
That's the extra cost that it was for us.
Which I think will come up soon.
Yep, so for, with the two cleanup days, the dumpsters.
Okay, so that's. The spring one is much more intense than the fall one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So.
But that stays, sure.
Okay, so.
Um, so what was decided about street painting, traffic signs?
Yeah.
Think we should give them this?
Yeah.
Well, signs are, well, unless we want to go to the family or the dollar store, I got some glitter and.
David.
Okay, um, so thinking about community center, you know, we need to think about how we're going to. To support that entity with the, their, if you like. Not just their chairs, but they're actually gonna come up short this year based on projections because of the insurance. So that is something that we're gonna need to support with our general fund.
Where we've raised the rates.
Well, we did say we wanted it to be a net zero. You know, so. See how we can.
Right.
How we can work with them.
I think, I think we still need to support them a little bit. It's gonna take a while.
Yeah, for sure.
You know, for them to.
If we're infrastructure, I think that we need to.
And we need to think about, you know, they may, when their committee is looking at the budget and thinking that we're gonna maybe provide, where if we provide some support, are they gonna think about? Do we wanna start thinking raising the rates there? How do they make money? Their money only comes from the revenues from their rentals. So they can rent, we can make more money by increasing the rates. We can in, make more money by having more activities. We get more activities because we do advertising, we put money into um, the, the, the promotion of like marketing. Or we make the chairs look nicer, the floors look nicer, the view look nicer. So. You know, those are the only two places we can, we can do it. We can increase rates or we can increase the amount of people who are coming in. We can support them while the community center group is thinking about how they want to, to do that.
What we're gonna have.
And it's, it's primarily, primarily winter events that we have to increase because we're pretty much sold out of it. And in the summer, there's a few spaces where we can fit some people in, but I will tell you the chairs are pretty decrepit looking. Like if we even, so this price was an original price to uh. Replace a chair now through West Front, we can cut that almost in. So if you replace a hundred chairs and have less. We'll play, replace a hundred chairs.
It's at the bottom, it's a very modest number.
For expenditures.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, I mean, you know, so they haven't gone through a full year yet.
Right.
So it's kinda hard to, you know.
Right, and so our projections are pretty mathematical, right? We don't know. You know, one of the things that, that's hard with the community centers that, you know. The ebb and flow of the seasonality of people renting is hard to project. So.
Right.
Right, we, we're, it, we're just basing it on mass. Um, and we also are, you know, how do we wanna advertise? All the different things that are part of it. I think that.
Or advertising.
But isn't that part of the manager's job? That we're paying a salary to, to do that, do that, you know? Seek and find and advertising and networking and all that fun stuff? But your crickets.
I mean, I think that you're right, you know, that that is a goal that we would want our managers to be doing. And. I think that we, you know, that we have a really strong committee right now. We can, you know. I know that at some point in time that they set out some guidelines for how we wanted the manager to, to proceed. You know, and so maybe we can um, have them look into how they want to move forward with the manager as far as marketing or how. Other, what other ideas they wanna come up with. To, to make up the deficit. In the meantime.
In the meantime. We have some surplus here. We have to put like twenty thousand dollars aside. To help the community center because we're gonna get stuck with it anyway.
Correct.
Oh, we have a deficit of the community that the town has to absorb.
And so right now, we, we are anticipating based on, on the numbers that we've looked at tonight, that there's gonna be a deficit of twelve thousand dollars. So, and we know that we could potentially do the chairs. You said you thought for about half of what we have. Here's the three.
You can do a hundred chairs.
For three thousand. So do we wanna consider doing a fifteen thousand dollar allocation for the community center for support and new chairs?
And then uh, give me an estimate, I do think for um, goodwill, we have to allocate. Five thousand to holidays or something? We gotta do decorations, bunny hop, Halloween.
That's true, cuz there was a lot of pushback when we didn't, remember when we didn't do any Christmas? Was it two Christmases ago?
I mean, so we've never really done Halloween. Where are we?
I say.
Well, just holiday in general because.
Makes people feel good and they stop in places.
So we decided three thousand for this hundred chairs. And are we allocating anything more?
Yeah, oh, okay. So you're left now with twenty two five.
Five thousand for all three. Isn't that?
So we've got twelve thousand. And then three thousand for chairs. Okay, great. I'm up to.
Are we good with holiday money?
So we could do, you know, we have holiday, we have.
We good with holiday money? Okay.
How much is holiday money?
Five thousand. Is that enough?
Well, typically it's just um, Christmas and Easter.
Well, we had in the past Halloween, giving out candy and stuff. And some decorations.
Where?
I think Easter.
Easter's the big one. Do we contribute at all to the turkey try in town? For the food? No.
No, they usually, I don't know what.
But that's all I remember.
Easter candy.
But five thousand goes faster when you're buying candy.
I just think that the, the town is known for Easter above any other.
But we do, we do need it. That's very important. Or winter holiday.
Do we wanna leave a soft budget of some money?
Yeah.
Yeah, right. So we, we have, right now we have seventeen thousand. We can show, we can create these expenditures. And we can put together our budget showing that we're gonna have a net of seventeen thousand.
Did we decide about weed control?
We do not have a number for weed control.
Yeah, with, yeah.
What's the killer weed? Just spraying them.
I love that.
I like that.
Taking it out on the leash and.
You know, just taste everything. They don't eat everything.
Weed control me.
And essentially spraying weeds.
I would usually just do it along the riverbank.
With Roundup.
No. We've had presentations about this. It's very safe for the water.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna disagree with you on a hundred percent on that.
We had a two hour presentation on this.
I don't care.
So, yeah, we have. We do have, we have weed on our.
So you go out there with the, you go out with the weed whacker next year.
You know, they clean them out.
Your house and weed whack your dog.
We have a lot of extra. So yeah, let's hire another uh, maintenance, halftime maintenance staff, but we don't.
But just thinking about other things we can talk about, other mayors should do a priority list. Are we hitting everything? Are there other things that we wanna add? Do we wanna leave the set off balance there for now? I wanna leave it.
If you ask me, we need to cut some of these expenses somewhere else back here.
Have in the budget already a seasonal halftime.
For the summer, employees and the parks and bathrooms in the summer is included.
Do they ever um, take the little ATV and ride the river?
If they do, they should pick up poop while they're doing it.
Oh, I don't know. Just spot weed whacking.
Well, we do snow removal with that thing.
Yeah.
No, no, she's talking about the summer guy. Does he go down and clean up?
You know, just like ride the river trail and hit weeds al- along the way?
Yeah, he does.
These days, they've waited at least three times for the law more.
Yeah, I see.
Okay, so thinking about the presentation in general, is there something that we missed? Something you have questions about? Something that doesn't seem like it's correct or that needs to be further investigated? Did we talk about ball field lights? Put that on hold. Okay.
Now, what, okay. I, negotiable on shade shelter idea, but it is absolutely essential, I think, that we get a bear proof trash can. Actually add the skate park and the, and the pump track cuz.
Those are. A kind of a dog park.
Yeah, it's.
Andy agreed to, he also thought we should do at least one more. Can over there, I believe, were those seventeen hundred? They're very expensive, but um, we can go ahead and all pull up data and pop it in the packet with our.
In, in addition to a big dumpster?
Well, I'm not even.
Different area. I think for the kids and their drinks and snacks.
Needs to be right there at the, or you're gonna have.
I think they're.
Yeah, people don't walk to go through.
The big dumpster, I don't know if that's even a good, I'm just saying.
Well, the hard part about it is that people already put all their, we get more household trash in our trash bins than we get regular trash.
Community center fills up all the time.
What the heck, really?
Weekends, and they just throw it up at Teddy Bear.
But we could do like a dumpster. Pay for your, um, your per, permit, and then you could lock it, use it, and then bring the key back. Kind of what we do with the community center.
And we'd, that'd be just a contractual thing with a, one of the. Sanitation company. Yeah.
But we could do something similar to that, you know, we have.
We could put a code in there, you know, that's.
I mean, just during, just during the summer when the gazebo is being used, that's.
I think that's.
When you said the gazebo, what are, you're talking about.
Well, you have to look at a timer. Turn the lights off.
Timer for a couple of years now.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, I just, my, my, coming back around. The budgets, I mean, I think that, to me, the budget's pretty complicated, thinking about all the different funds, thinking about where money's coming from, where money's going, and it just is so sweet. I wanna make sure that before we move forward, there's not questions, there's not big gaping spaces where you think. This didn't make sense to me, or I'm not in agreement with the team on this. You know, everybody feels comfortable with the information, where the money is being spent, that it is open and. And very clear and transparent to everyone with how we have been spending money and if we're going to be spending money, how it comes in. How we're making our estimates. You know, that you can see the math, you can see the um. The, the rationale with where, where we came up with that, this data. I wanna just make sure that we're all clear and feel good about it before we walk away.
Now, I've, this is like, been the best one I've ever been to.
Thank you.
We'll get to sound weed control.
So the second part would be, and this is not something that's decided tonight, but it does need to be reviewed tonight. Need the water fund, save two waters and the five percent.
Be on the next election?
No, so you guys do the rate.
A resolution to increase the rate, and now it would need to be January of twenty sixth. And that's something that is gonna be either add, added to the budget or not. And those numbers would be moving forward to our loan recommend, you know, when we're requesting our loans, et cetera. So if you go past to the next page, you can see there was the outline for where we have the community center, and then here's a line by line of the water fund. Some of the other issues that were not included in the previous part because they were. Um, like we put all the salaries together, so it was clear and easy to see. The portion of the salaries that's allocated to the water fund is here, which is a hundred and fifty nine thousand. So some of those other parts, the insurance, the audit, those are portions that are allotted to water specifically, that gives you the grand total. For both revenues, that's only what water brings in, and the expenditures, which are only what goes out with water. And that we can see without the five percent, we cannot, we are not breaking even. We continue to move forward. With the water, base to water.
I'll raise it.
So that's not a resolution for tonight, so.
Why you got it?
Well, this is a fifty year project. I mean, we gotta do it.
Yeah, I mean, we, you can't really push this much farther because.
We were here, and so the thought would be.
We have amendments from eighteen eighty two. So emails and.
Water, save water.
And if there's any other.
What's that data?
What do we do?
I can't remember. I think there was a chart on one hand with, you know, this type and then this type.
So like they're the whole.
You don't have any. Gonna go. We, we pretty much done?
Any questions?
Nope, great, great job.
Yeah. Better than last year, really good.
The county rejects the sheriff.
Right.
Water plant that.
I have a great.